Next on our agenda is our regular city council study session. So we'll begin that. Again, this is the city council study session for April the 18th, and all of our council is present. The first item on our agenda is to hear a presentation and provide direction on three departmental budgets, those being water resources, environmental management and sustainability, and energy resources. So we welcome the Water Department.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Jake West, Water Resources Department Director. Who I have with me here today is our Deputy Director for Wastewater Collections and Distribution, Chris Hassert; Deputy Director for Financial Services, Enterprise Services, Seth Weld; and Assistant Director, Carlos Padilla, who manages all our plants. We're here this morning, we're happy to be here. We're selling -- it's Water Resources is celebrating the first inaugural Arizona Water Professionals Day. So in honor of that, in recognition of that, we've placed some commemorative cups from our recently opened Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant. So we thought we'd bring these along as gifts because that plant at EZ Water Conference last night received an award for the best treatment project for EZ Water. So we're very proud of them.
Congratulations.
As you can see, water and wastewater systems continue to grow. We were -- I was trying to get what our average monthly account growth is, but I didn't have that available to me this morning, I apologize. As I mentioned earlier, we have received a lot of accomplishments for all the things that we do in water. We continue to get recognition through our peers and associations for the work that we do. Some of our top challenges, just like every other city, I was in a meeting with the Utility Leaders Forum as the group, as part of the Arizona Municipal Water Users Association. We're all having the same problems with recruiting for and retaining qualified staff. And we do a -- we're doing continuously looking to improve our services using technology, which we will discuss as we go further on in the presentation.
Excuse me, Jake. Mr. Thompson has a question.
I have a real quick question. If you go back to the second slide, you said, there you go, under connections, it says water systems, 157,000 residential and commercial connections. Is that right?
Yes.
So we have 500,000 citizens and we only have 157,000 connections? Okay.
Mr. Luna.
Jake, I had a question relative to recruiting and retaining highly qualified staff. What are you -- what are you looking for? Are you working with our colleges, our community colleges, to try to recruit additional personnel that can work with the City of Mesa Water Department?
Well, I'm glad you asked. We've got, really, the issue is with the electricians and the operators that are operating and maintaining the plants. There's a lot of needs for them as the city or in the state, the area is growing. But we do a very good job working with Gateway Community College, where we have an intern program that we bring an intern in who qualifies, comes in, we bring him on for a year, we hire him through a temp agency, bring him on through a year, and so that they can get that experience, get to the point where they're able to get their certifications, and then we hire them on as an operator one and an operator two. And I'll share with you a recent success story. We have a, we had to recruit for a water quality supervisor, and we hired from an internal candidate. He was an operator at Brown Road Water Treatment Plant. He started as an intern, went to an operator one, to an operator two, and now he's a supervisor. So we have those relationships with the colleges. We had a SNAPU a couple of years ago where we had a couple candidates come to us from Gateway, but they weren't interested in employment. They were getting, trying to get the college credits for it. But for the most part, we've had a very successful program working out to community colleges in the area.
So Jake, is there any opportunity to work with Mesa Community College? I know that Councilmember Duff and Aridi are working with Mesa Community College from high, to make the transition from high school to the college system. Is there maybe opportunities we might want to explore?
Yeah, those are, those are opportunities we can explore. The reason we go through Gateway is because they've got a water program, and so with the higher technical type jobs and stuff, that's a good program for us. But no, we'd be absolutely to do a community affair, fair or whatever, to talk about the other jobs that we have in water, where we have in distribution, where we have utility workers and all the other things, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to pick it up from here and talk about a few of our performance metrics in water and wastewater. And starting with water, we've listed a few performance metrics for you. The one of significance is the second one, percent groundwater pumped. You can see, we try to achieve a target of 10%. And what that means is, when you look at all the water we supply to our customers, we try to limit what we pump from the ground to about 10% or less. So we prefer to rely on sustainable service water supplies. Last year, we were almost double the target. We were close to 20%. And you can see this year, we've cut that almost in half, and that's a testament to the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant coming online, giving us the ability to enhance our service water treatment and cut down the amount of groundwater that we pump. Switching to wastewater, again, we've listed some performance metrics. Again, I want to focus on the middle metric of percent or number of miles of sewer lines inspected. And when we talk about sewer lines inspected, that's really our CCTV work. So that's getting a camera truck out to a sewer, running a camera through, and just looking at what's inside the sewer, if there's any defects, is it blocked, that type of thing. So going back to something Jake mentioned a little earlier on a previous slide, in terms of technology, we've adopted a technology for sewer inspection that's an acoustic technology. And what it does is, it sends a sound wave through the sewer, and by that acoustic signature, you can tell if the sewer is completely clear, if it has some blockage, or if it's even completely blocked. So looking at that middle metric, we've actually tripled our target in terms of miles of sewer that we inspect. And what that allows us to do is, if you look at the first goal, number of miles of sewer lines cleaned. Before, we used to just canvas an area, so we'd look at a couple quarter sections, we'd get our vector trucks out there, and we'd just start cleaning sewers, street by street. With that acoustic technology, what that's allowed us to do is to keep a list of sewers we know are blocked, or know have issues, so that we can better target what we send our vector trucks to. So it's allowed us to be a lot more effective in how we clean our sewers as well.
Yes, Mr. Whitaker.
A quick question, I might be jumping the gun here. Are your, the inspections of the sewer lines, this talks about inspecting them for like clogged lines or whatever, can you talk about what technology or use of technology to analyze the lifespan of the actual sewer pipes, and how much longer those pipes have left before they have to be completely replaced? Or how does that technology measure something like that?
Sure. Well, the acoustic technology plays into that, as well as the CCTV. The CCTV is probably a little bit more useful in terms of trying to time rehabilitation versus cleaning, because the CCTV is going to pick up any kind of defects, whether it's a crack, or the top of the pipe could even be missing in cases from hydrogen sulfide degradation. And so what that allows us to do is use an established scoring system. So it's called the NASCO scoring system. It ranks sewers on one through five, and then we're able to look at all the fours, and especially the fives, and then prioritize those, because there's also recommendations tied to the scoring. So if you have a five, the recommendation is, that's imminent failure, at least in that location in the sewer, or whatever is, falls under that rating. So then that allows us to prioritize. And if you have a four, well, that's a recommendation, then keep an eye on that, come back within five years, look at it again. But there's a, there's a series of criteria that we follow to do what you're saying, to prioritize replacement.
Okay, but the same technology, then, it is being used for that. And I know later in your slide, you'll get to the actual life and the replacement of when you're going to replace those pipes. So perhaps I'll save my second part of my question, but related to how accurate are your projections of when those pipes actually need to be replaced?
Okay.
But I'll wait for the other slide.
So now I'm going to stay on the topic of technology adoption, but I'm just going to switch over to advanced metering infrastructure. I'm not going to go into a terrible amount of detail on this today, because our intent is to come back to, in a few months, possibly this summer, and give a much more comprehensive, detailed overview of our objectives for AMI. I will say that we have recently, we're very early on in a Phase One trial. So our intent is to, first, we're going to issue an RFP to get a consultant on board to help us with the project management, because there's many facets to an AMI program. So we want someone who's experienced in those areas to come on board and work side by side with us, help us through the program. Also, I should mention that AMI is an important component of smart cities, especially when it comes to the communication network. So that communication network, since it's applied throughout the entire city, it can really be leveraged for other smart city applications that can be layered in, and also piggyback on that communications network. If you look at the next slide, this is a standard graphic of, it shows the many, the pieces and elements of an AMI system. Our goal in Phase One is to include about 1% of our customers in a trial, and what we'd like to do is test out at least two vendor AMI systems, and see how they work within Mesa, with our customer base and our technology, and see what would be the best fit for us on that 1%. In particular, we want to test the technology, and when I say technology, it's not just meter reads, but it's the accuracy of the reads going through the communication system, being disseminated by a data management system, and then going through our customer billing system, so we can issue an accurate bill to our customer. And then we also feel very strongly about empowering our customers, so that rather than get a bill once a month with one meter read, and then not really know how they're using water, we can empower our customers with not only daily water usage, but hourly water usage even, so they can see exactly how they're using water. That can lead to asking more informed questions from us, as well as maybe adopting or adapting how they use their water.
Excuse me, Mr. Freeman.
So thank you for that. I recently had a friend of mine in my district contact me that staff had called him because of unusual water usage on his property, and he found a significant leak. And so somehow that was able to be monitored, and we were able to shut it down, because it was a two-inch line, and so it was going quite rapidly. So thank you for that.
And in those cases, we would have to roll out a truck if someone calls and they say, "Well, our, the current bill we have is nothing like our past bills." The water usage went up quite a bit, and we have the same information that the customer does. We see a data point from last month or the prior months, and we see their current data point. But it doesn't tell any kind of story. If we know how water's being used on an hourly basis, we can look at that data, and you can see when something changed, you can have that interaction with the customer. And just without rolling a truck over the phone, you can pinpoint possibly if they had a leaking toilet, or if they noticed a wet area in the backyard from their irrigation system. And you can save a lot of truck rolls, you can reduce staff, you can just operate much more efficiently, and those are the kinds of things we're interested in.
Mr. Luna.
So is the whole idea, first of all, this is a great project that you're working on, but the whole idea is eventually you won't have meter readers going to houses and collecting data, that you'll be using technology to acquire that data, and then have your billing system work that way? Is that the objective?
We would, we would have a few meter readers, because with any technology that's complicated and complex, you're going to have some reads that don't go through, or misreads. You're going to have some problem, you want to roll a truck out, and you want to do a specific meter read. So you will have a few staff to do that, but you're correct, we have 24 meter readers today. At the end of this program, several years from now, we would expect to have just a few meter readers. But in the meantime, we would, there would be about half a dozen new positions created that would be more technology focused on supporting the AMI system. So there would be some retraining involved with that as well.
You know, one of the, as we started moving towards the AMI systems, both for the natural gas side and for the water side, my only concern is that right now with meter readers, we can do the visual inspections of the gas system as well, you know, the meter, as well as the meter box and stuff for water. Are we still going to be able to do that on an annual basis, looking for atmospheric corrosion? Because the last thing we want to do is just walk away and not have those inspections. I know on the gas side, it's, it's a code issued, federal DOT code issued to check for atmospheric corrosion. And so I just want to make sure that we're not getting away from that. Are we going to redeploy those meter readers into that type of capacity, or something of that nature?
Well, things would definitely be different with an AMI program. So you're not going to have eyes on a meter once a month, so you're definitely not going to have that. You will, if the corrosion is such that it's going to cause an impact to the device that sends the data, or the meter itself, we're going to have metrics set up automatically that as soon as the meter accuracy starts to deviate out of a predicted channel, that'll say something's wrong. And then we'll go out there to want to look at the meter, possibly pull the meter and test it. So there'll be other triggers that we don't have now, that'll be different than what we have now, which is eyes on the meter once, once a month.
I guess my biggest concern is on the natural gas side. And because right now, they're utilizing, I guess, some of your meter readers to do the atmospheric corrosion inspections on, on the gas risers and on the meter itself. You know, here comes Frank. And so I just want to make sure that we're not steering away from that, because that's a situation where we really should be proactive and not reactive.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmember Thompson. Frank McCray with the Energy Resource Department. We started deviating from using the meter readers for that specific purpose several years ago, so we've started implementing other ways of inspecting those meters and seeing whether our corrosion control technologies are working. So I don't see that the conversion to the AMI or smart meters is really going to cause a deterioration in our ability to maintain those inspections and meet the code requirements.
I have one question, I know.
Yes.
Last presentation, but what is the timeline as far as, I know you're doing the pilot program now, but if that goes well, is there a projection that we'd like to convert to this system in three years? I mean, as far as the total project conversion?
Yes, Councilmember Duff, Mayor. We are looking at that. We're going through the pilot right now, because we have the funds available currently to do that, but we will be coming back later in this year or next year for a 20, if there is going to be a 2020 authorization, that would be the source of funding moving forward for an overall citywide deployment.
Part of this answer, Jake, is one of the things we're trying to determine is what is the cost for full rollout? That's what pilot programs need to help us out with, right? We, no, we actually have new meters that go out that allow for the attachment of these devices, so that's, eventually, though, you saw, there's 157,000 of these out there, so it's going to, it would take some time. Plus, then there's the infrastructure, the supporting infrastructure, that we have to build to bring that signal back to the main server. So right now, we're in the exploratory to come up with that number, to come to council. But one of the reasons we're moving quickly now is, that's why we want to come back to the council in the fall, to discuss as part of our total bond package, this would be, there'd be, this part would be part of the program that we would talk about, too. So we, that's why we're trying to get the pilot program going, so we can give you an estimate later in the fall.
Okay, one of our other challenges, as noted on an earlier slide, is the increasing cost just to buy the raw water commodity for us to treat. So this slide, on the left-hand side, you see what the unit cost per acre foot is. Now, the CAP only approves two years at a time, and at the end of 2019, that is the end of the current two-year cycle. Their meeting, as we speak, to start establishing their next two-year approved rates, and their future rates as well. So that unit rate translates to the right side based on our usage, and what our annual forecasted water commodity cost is for the CAP water. Again, as they change those rates, we may see a change on that right-hand side. Conversely, on the SRP side, they too are also evaluating their rates, and they should be approving here shortly, but we are forecasting a slight increase in the SRP rates as well. So combined for 1920, we're looking at about a $1 million increase just to buy the water to treat.
Okay, update on the Colorado River. Well, just recently, the, earlier this week, the President of the United States approved the drought contingency plans for the basin, the Colorado Basin states. While that was going on, all of this occurred, the Colorado Basin experienced record snowpack and flow, inflow into Powell. So most recently, CAP, the Central Arizona Projects, or the Bureau of Reclamation's recommendation is, we will not be in shortage in 2020, most likely not in '21. And as they're still getting wet weather up in Colorado, in the Upper Basin, there might not even be a shortage call in 2022.
Okay, now, switching gears on the capital program a little bit, the next slides that you have are the remaining water bond authorizations for water and wastewater. The first one deals with the water bonds. As you can see, the authorization was, original authorization was 316 million, and 49 million remains. And as you can see, all of the remaining funds have been completely allocated to either projects that are underway, or commitments that are underway. And on the water side, certainly, our commitment to develop Vista Water Treatment Plan for upgrades and capital improvements is the largest portion of that. And you see the remaining projects are lifecycle replacements and so forth. So again, all of our water bonds have been allocated for 2014.
Excuse me, sir. Mr. Freeman has a question.
Are any new well sites included in this bond authorization, or is that out of a separate fund?
That's not in the 2014. That would be in the future, like 2020.
Do we have any current well sites being drilled out of the prior bond package at all, or?
Yes, we have a couple of wells that we drilled, and we brought on, brought online. At the same time, a Signal Butte was coming online, we brought two additional wells.
What is the cost to drill a well today, ballpark?
It's in the neighborhood of 1 million to 1.2 million to drill, and about the same amount to equip, so.
About 2.5 million at the end of the day?
Two to 2.5 million, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, on the wastewater bonds, the wastewater 2014 bond authorization, again, the original authorization was 178 million, and 69 million remains, with the majority of that slated for the completion of our greenfield water reclamation plant, which is underway, followed by contractual obligations at the 91st Avenue Wastewater Treatment Plant, where Mesa and four other cities own the facility, and some minor improvements that we also need to do in the collection system. So again, all of the funds are completely allocated for both water and wastewater. All right, so our largest project that we have in our capital program is the expansion of the greenfield water reclamation plant. This is a joint venture with the towns of Gilbert and Queen Creek. The expansion will add 14 MGD million gallons per day, to bring the plant to a total capacity of 30 million gallons per day. Mesa will gain 10 million gallons out of that, bringing an ownership to 14 million gallons per day. The price tag of this project is 210 million, and 127 million of that will be Mesa's share. This is an aerial photograph that was taken earlier in the year, showing you some of the initial stages of construction. We have the mass excavation and concrete phases underway, and these are some of the key processes that we're adding. On the top left, we are adding an additional headworks, and this is where the additional flow comes into the plant. Here, it goes through a preliminary screening to remove some of the big objects, plastics, rugs, to protect the pumps downstream. And on the top right, we have two additional digestors. You see that, those are the, they're kind of egg-shaped steel tanks, and you see the bottom of the egg being formed right there. And this is the process that allow us to recycle our solids and use them for, as a fertilizer. On the top, on the bottom right, we have two new erosion basins that we're adding. This is where the majority of the biological activity takes place. Here, we introduce air, so that we have oxygen for the microbes, and they can consume the organics really happily. And then on the bottom left, we are starting the secondary clarifiers. You see some of this lab and wallwork, and these are the, where, these clarifiers is where the microbes that grow in the erosion basins will eventually settle. So just to give you a picture of some of the components of the plant. So with that, next was to...
So Carlos just talked about some of the remaining needs we have with prior bond money, and now we wanted to switch and talk about some future capital needs we've identified. Some of these are, are single projects, standalone projects, and some of these are really part of larger programs. I'll talk about the first one, which is our water distribution system. There's a few things going on with this graphic, but what I'd point your attention to is that orange line that runs across the graph, and that's at a value of 26 million. And the significance of that is, based on all our modeling analysis, we've calculated that to maintain a 50-year replacement cycle for all the pipes, the water pipes we have in the ground right now, we would have to invest approximately 26 million a year, year in and year out, to maintain that service life. So in other words, if we spend more than that, we can shorten that replacement cycle. If we spend less, we're going to have a longer replacement cycle. We've also noted that due to competitive requirements within our CIP, the last few years, we've underspent that quite a bit. We've averaged about 3.6 million a year for the last three fiscal years. So that concerns us a little bit, because what that's saying is that instead of expecting a 50-year service life out of our pipes, now we're pushing to not only 100 years, but well beyond 100 years. That's not sustainable over the long run, so it's something we certainly keep an eye on, in terms of how we balance this need with other needs in our program.
Mr. Whitaker.
So help me understand here, so you've averaged the investment of 3.6 million per year, but moving forward, you're requesting quite a significant increase, right? Exponentially to 26 million dollars?
Well, that, that's not our request. We probably will, will stay short of that, because as I mentioned, we do need to balance the needs of the distribution system with all the other needs within the department. So 26 million is simply, it's a value that we would, that would equate to a 50-year replacement cycle. So we're still vetting and prioritizing our needs and comparing that to other needs within the department. So the 26 million is not an ask, it's really just a value that equates to a 50-year service life for pipes.
Yeah, so I'm not a pipe expert, so help me understand. It sounds like if we don't invest, if you invest 26 million annually, that means you're going to replace every pipe on a 50-year cycle, but if you spend less than that, you're going to have to get more life out of your pipes. Am I interpreting that correctly?
That's exactly right.
And so I guess you guys are the expert at this, and this goes back to my other question about your CCTV and some of your sonar-based technology to analyze the pipes, but how realistic is it that, how sustainable is it that you would switch from a 50-year cycle to a 100-year cycle, replacing your pipes?
You would see, if, if we were investing the amount of money that would translate into a 100-year replacement cycle, we would just see a lot more leaks and breaks within the system. So we'd be more reactive in terms of our operation staff, there'd be more leaks and breaks to address over time, and it would change year to year, it's hard to predict.
Okay. Yeah, I, I still have a hard time wrapping my head around that, because 3.6 million is significantly less than 26 million, and I just want to make sure that we're adequately investing enough money in our infrastructure to make sure that it's reliable and sustainable, right? But when I talk to, when I have conversations with budget, they say, you know, a lot of times you guys will project that the pipes need to be replaced, but then you'll do additional testing, and you realize that you can actually stretch the life out of the pipes longer. So I'm concerned, how do I get an accurate version of when these pipes actually need to be replaced until they, you know, if this is just, how do you make this more accurate, really? These pipes have to be replaced in these years, so that we can wrap our head around the actual capital cost it's going to take to replace these pipes at some point in the future?
With water pipes, it's a lot more difficult than sewers, because sewers are predominantly gravity flow, so you can get your camera in there, you can see exactly what's going on. And the technology is a lot more expensive with pressure pipes, with water pipes, so you're really, you're going off risk-based formulas. So that's the, the analysis that we use for the water distribution system. We look at the consequence of failure and the likelihood of failure, and then that gives us the risks. So what's the risk if we take this particular eight-inch ACP down a certain street, and that's 57 years old? What's, what's the risk? And then that allows us to really look system-wide, what are the highest-risk pipes? So we have a long prioritized list of needs, of course, but there's no way to really zero in and predict even within five years when a pipe would fail, especially a water distribution pipe. So you use these formulas and risk assessments to do the best you can to prioritize and target it that way.
Yeah, so I guess when we do our capital allocation... Yeah, so I guess when we do our capital allocation, what I'm trying to understand is, you know, if you want 26 million to stay on a 50-year service life, but we're only spending 3.6, like clearly we're stretching the pipes out longer than the life, the 50-year life cycle. So I guess my other question will become like, where do the, where does the 50-year lifecycle number come from? Is that like a best recommended practice of how many years you replace one of these pipes? Is, is there, is there like a scale of extreme, you know, high risk? If, if your pipes, if you're on a 75-year cycle or 100-year cycle, you're going to have major issues with your pipes in the future? Like, help me understand how the three-point, where, where does the 3.6 put us on that chart?
It would push out the expected design life well beyond 100 years. So it's not a sustainable, it's not a prolonged value you want to work with year in and year out. The last few years, it was lower because there were competing needs. We had large treatment plant, new plants and expansions that really competed for the bulk of what we could put into the CIP program. So we put together this slide.
Chris, I think, let's pause here. I was waiting for that. That's, let's, don't get focused on the 3.6 million, Mayor and Council, because as you recall, when we did the last bond package, it was heavily weighted towards plants, expansion, right? So we had Signal View Water Treatment Plant, which was $126. $26 million. We had the Greenfield Plant, which is?
127.
What's that?
127.
127. So 250 million or so just for those two alone. Then we had Val Vista, what was the other plant improvement? Didn't we do some improvements?
We did some improvements at Val Vista.
Val Vista. So this was, this five-year, last five-year was really focused on plants, expansion, and in Val Vista's case, doing our separation from Phoenix. Is that right, Carlos? What do we call it? So one of the things we'll evaluate, and the department does a good job evaluating, is as we go into, we come back to council for the next list of projects, we will balance out, you know, now is this the time that we can focus more on pipes and other? I mean, we would, we still need to help out. There's still going to be demand on the plants. But it's this balance that we go through in the prioritization of projects that the department, working with budget, working with all of us as we determine what's the amount that's sustainable and also being sensitive to the impact it has on rates and to the future. So all those things will be considered and when we bring those back to you in the fall.
So we've invested 3.6 million over the last three fiscal years. I mean, so give me, what's the long-term average? What have we risked, what have we averaged over the last 10 years or the last 15 years in replacements?
Yeah. Well, I mean, Councilmember Whitaker, Mayor, in 2014 authorization, we had programmed at least $10 million annually for waterline replacements. But as Mr. Brady said, when we're competing with a huge authorization because we were plant-focused, we had two plant projects going on in the same authorization, we dropped that back down to 5 million annually, per year for that authorization. That's where we got the 3.6 because sometimes things change. We have a plan. We know where these bad pipes are. It's the 60s-era ACP pipe. That's what I call newsbreakers. Those are the ones that you see that will go flying through the citywide emails where we've got road closures, we've got people out of water, we've got cave-ins in streets. It impacts, it can impact energy, it impacts streets, it impacts our citizens. We know where those are at and we try to program those in. So we put those dollars out there and we know what the average cost is going to be. But at any given moment, any given day, another line could break that is going to be a little bit more critical. So we got to pull those dollars away from where we were programming and address the emergency. So that's the balance that we have with regards to the age of our system. It's not only the age, but it's the different kinds of pipes. In the downtown area, you've got cast iron. That doesn't blow up. That just kind of leaks over time. And we, we've got a program that we've had instilled since 2004 where we put these loggers on our water valves in those areas because they're, they're inherently, those are small leaks. So we try to get them and get those, those pipes repaired before they become breaks. The ACP pipe, that's the stuff that explodes. And then you've got our ductile iron pipe, which is the pipe that we have starting to grow the most of. And that's a more solid piece of pipe and it, it's pretty more resilient. Usually when we have failures, failures in that pipe, it's usually due to poor construction or just some weird contractor damage. So. But that's the balance that we do when we're trying to program buried infrastructure. It's not, it's not the sexy part of the business because we're, we're, you know, kind of being, you know, it's, it's an unseen asset that people don't realize until it breaks or when they go to turn on their water, it's not there.
Then Jake, you may also be spending funds on new piping too, for new, give of new growth. So sometimes that puts pressure on your priorities versus replacing existing pipes. So there's all kinds of things you have to balance out.
So if we assume that you spent 3.6 million a year on average, what does, what does that put the life cycle of the pipe, how many years roughly?
I think we'd have to figure that out, but it would be well north of 100 years.
But that's not our plan going forward. That's, that's, that's not a presumption that we should use, that we're only going to be doing 3.6. It'll, it'll most likely be higher than that. We'd have to look at the average going forward.
Well, that's why, I think my last question, you know, what is the long-term average that we've spent on pipe replacement? That way we can?
We, we'll come back and then we'll also, that's what we want to talk about in the fall is, then looking forward, what would we make those commitments to be in the next bond package? We would allocate so many dollars for water, water replacement also.
Yes, Jen.
As, I just have one comment and, and I know I've made these comments before. But as we look forward in our significant costs that we have, starting with the DCP, I understand that, and through the CAP, they announced if we have to exercise the elements going into the plan, the drop contingency plan, that there will be significant water increases to the use of water, getting water, like 40%. We're looking at significant increases. So looking that that is possibly on the horizon, I just wanted to make sure what, however we spend our monies and look at our infrastructure, that we're looking at it in a more sustainable view as far as how can we incorporate purple pipes? How can we do more onsite reuse? If we don't look at what we can do to be more conservation-minded or more sustainable-minded, then we're going to draw on significant costs for you, in transport of, using groundwater, finding more groundwater, transporting groundwater, new treatment plants, which is hundreds of millions of dollars when you look at it. So I just wanted to put, you're the water experts, but I just want to put out that consideration that we look at a lot of alternative methods that are used in sustainability of water use because this is very real. This is within a five-year view of these things becoming part of our life. And we, I don't know if we have a 100-year plan for our city. Hopefully we do. But, and I think that's when we look at what infrastructure we're placing today, that we're looking 50 years, 100 years out.
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, with, with regards to the purple pipe concept, currently the status of all of our groundwater that we have underground, our effluent goes to either the ground, the Granite Reef Underground Storage Project, which is GRUSP, which we use that water as part of our portfolio. Or we send it through the Shrog System, the Subregional Operating Group, which is the 91st Avenue Plant that is shared by the four cities in Phoenix. And that water is then treated and sent to the Palaverdy Nuclear Power Plant, which we're a part of, and we receive some, some revenues for, for selling that water. So our current effluent issue, we don't have any extra at this time. But with regards to impending shortages and other things, we're constantly looking for other ways that we can find that next bucket of water without having to go into our groundwater. So be glad to have the conversation offline and tell you what, I mean, show us what our program is. But in the next slide here, you're going to see where we have one project where we think that, again, with that Underground Storage Project, GRUSP, when you have wet years like we have right now, we cannot put water in GRUSP because you have the mounding between, we've got the landfill there and it's whatever. So a lot of that water that we can't put underground when we have wet years, the water goes into our basins over there by the Northwest Water Treatment Plant. We don't get credit for that, for the replenishment of the aqua for there. Or it goes down the Salt River. That's a valuable commodity that has a very, very good price on it that we don't, we don't utilize because we don't have the infrastructure to do it. So this next project's going to give you a little bit of a highlight of what our plans are to be able to find that, find that. All the Valley Cities have done a wonderful job of putting water into the ground for future use. But just like Phoenix had announced last year when they were going to raise some rates because they needed to do some infrastructure. A lot of the cities are in the same boat. We've got to get that water, the ability to move that water where it needs to be currently from where it's currently at. So.
And then Jake?
Yes.
Well, I was going to say, maybe you should also mention, as it relates to consumption in new developments, that's significantly dropping off. And then overall for the whole city, I guess with both the new construction, but even overall, we've seen an actual per-account consumption? I think I'm saying this right. A slight decrease overall. So we are seeing that conservation taking place, right?
Yes, the conference, that conservation is working. Even though we're growing accounts, the overall household usage is, is lower. And I think you've probably seen it in when the DCP was being talked about, that Phoenix and all the Valley Cities, even though we're growing, we're using less water today than we were, you know, 25 years ago.
Comparatively, yeah. And we've talked about it and I don't want to get too deep into it, but the, you know, the recent use of water, that we don't have to have drink quality water for our golf courses and a lot of toilets, things that we can do whether onsite or within our, to alleviate, leave capacity for water treatment that we do, you know, use in drinking water and such. Thank you.
I just want to clarify one thing. We say we use a lot less water than we did, whatever year you just referenced. I'm assuming you're referring like on a per-capita basis, right? Not like overall.
Per capita.
Okay, thank you.
That's a very good segue to another challenge that we have in the future. One of our most important needs in the future is to acquire additional water rights to support future, future expansion of our system and also to support the expansion of the Signal View Water Treatment Plant, which I will talk a little bit about that later. So basically, the concept here is that in order to get additional water rights, we are proposing to convert the reclaimed water from the Northwest Water Reclamation Plant into additional CAP water credits. So the, the concept would be that the flow from Northwest, instead of going to GRUSP, like Jake explained, we cannot get credits all year long at GRUSP. Instead, we will bring it south and go to, to Greck, to the Gila River Indian Community. So we will do that under an exchange agreement that we have in place. And under that agreement, for any, for five gallons of reclaimed water that we send them, we get four gallons of CAP water rights that we can use at Brown Road or Signal View. So it's a really good deal. So that's how we, we.
So Carlos, so the Gila River Indian Community possesses or has, I don't know what the right word is, controls so many rights of the CAP water. Is that correct? More than they are using?
More than they can use, correct.
Yet that's a significant source for us. And that's where we pull water in, both at Brown and at Signal View, correct? Those are two treatment plants where we pull in CAP water. So that's an important resource for us. So the thought is if we can exchange our effluent from the Northwest, make sure I'm saying this right, Northwest Plant, and, and transport it down to the Signal View Plant, right? Or, or not?
To Greenfield.
Greenfield, sorry. Greenfield. Then we can move that, that, we already have that set up to move that water to the Gila River Indian Community from that point today.
Yes, correct.
But we haven't been able to, what other word is, produce, generate enough water coming out of that plant? We're, we're short of what the agreement allows for. Okay. We have a lot more opportunity to exchange water out of the Greenfield Plant than we're currently able to do today.
That is correct.
Even with the expansion of the plant, we still would be short of what is available for us to exchange with the Gila Rivers. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
So the idea is we would take advantage of the effluent we do have up on the north end of the city. And if we can move that water down to Greenfield, then we can maximize that exchange with the Gila's. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. Then we would just pump it to the Greck. So in essence, at the end of the day, we'll have the reclaimed water from the three water reclamation plants, Southeast Greenfield and Northwest, being sent to the Greck. And like Jake was saying, the other piece is going to 91st Avenue. So really, we don't have any excess, any excess reclaimed water that we can do anything with. It's all going for water rights in case, in the case of the three plants. So you could see here, the concept is to basically build a 10-inch or 36-inch main, 10 miles of 36-inch main, I'm sorry, that would bring the water to the Greenfield Water Reclamation Plant. This project is projected to cost 66 million, which includes the pipeline as well as various other upgrades that we need to do at the Northwest Plant in order to facilitate this project. And we have shown here some of the cost breakdowns as well as a timeline. We would recommend to have this facility in place by 2024 prior to the expansion of the Signal View Water Treatment Plant, which I'll talk a little bit later, so that again, we would have those water credits to be able to expand the plant. In the 2014 bond, out of the 2014 bonds, we have allocated $2 million. You see there, $2 million for alignment study because we would like to start that right away as soon as possible in 2019 because this is going to be a pretty complex and lengthy project. You know, 10 miles of pipe, potentially through a major, a major highway. That's going to be very difficult. So that is kind of one of our key challenges in the future.
Chris, real quick, if I can. You had mentioned once before that potentially working with RWCD to utilize their canal as a transport to Greck?
That's, that was, that was an observation I had. And so I think we're still exploring that. So that, this would be the most conservative estimate, obviously, if we were to work with them. And again, there's, there's been mixed reception, I should say, to that. We probably need to spend some more time trying to pursue that. But if we don't, we have, you know, assuming we don't rely upon that solely. I mean, we're going to still pursue that, yes.
So because, because that, the map I'm looking at, if you go back?
Yeah, no, it's, it's.
You know, you could, you could put in at the top.
Yeah, no, it, it begs the question. Yeah, it does beg the question. Yeah. So that's why, that was my observation. Let's go have that conversation again and see if we can get a better response.
That'd be kind of a big deal, I think. I mean, it could potentially save 66 million.
Well, I suspect there would be significant improvements they would need to have in order to that. But we need to evaluate it and see if that would be in our best interest. But yes, thank you.
That's awesome.
Reminder, yeah.
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, if you look at that map, at the top of it, you've got, you can see that it was planned in the original thing of that where, I'm sorry, Thompson. Mr. Thompson, I apologize. You can see at the top of that map, you got that little green line. That was, that was, that was the original connection point that we were going to do with RWCD back in the time. And then negotiations broke down. And so that's why we think that you've got, that some of the infrastructure is already there and it makes sense to at least pursue looking at what we need to do, whether it's through the canal with a new agreement with them or building a pipeline.
You know, Councilmember Thompson, it's a capacity issue for RWCD because that's their high-end delivery portion. Whereas down lower is their lower end and they have less water down there. And that's probably why they're blocking a little bit. But, you know, there's continued discussion on that.
Quick question. Reclaimed water, is, is that the same as effluent? Is that just another word for the same thing? Okay.
Yeah, it's a technical term.
Reclaimed is, is the same. That's why, you know, you'll see some plants, they don't call them wastewater treatment plants anymore. They call them reclaimed water.
Reclamation.
A different shade of gray.
Yeah.
And Mayor Giles as well. You'll probably start, I think the industry is getting away from the word reclaimed or they're using terms like reuse. I mean, when we go to a conference anywhere, it's a reuse conference, a water reuse. And so it's a nicer way of saying it's, it's still good water because it's clean. It's actually clean to higher standards than drinking water when you have to class, treat to Class A effluent.
So currently, the reclaimed water we have at that site is being recharged into the groundwater?
Currently, yes.
Okay, which is not a bad thing.
It's a great thing until we can no longer put water in there. We're internally, we're going to put a group together. We're going to start looking at historically how much, you know, water is, how often are we not available to put water into GRUSP? Which means that commodity is going down the river or we're not getting credit for it.
We're losing that opportunity.
We're losing that, losing that opportunity because that's going to really be significant. It could be significant that give us a little more, you know, meat on the bone with regard. it could be significant that give us a little more, you know, meat on the bone with regards to the necessity of this pipe.
Okay, so we got to get our, our Grasp's and our Greck's figures.
Greck's.
So it, instead of sending it to Grasp, we want to send it to Grisp.
Yes.
There you go.
Yes.
But Greck. But that comes, there's, there's positives and negatives. Both locations, we wish we had more water that we could.
Grasp has, Grasp has a certain capacity, certain, certain times of year. Like this time of the year, it's.
You can only percolate so much water into.
Yeah, when it's a wet season, it's, it's.
Right.
And also, and also with Grasp, you, when you recover the water that you're, you're recharging, you recover it with groundwater. So you have to drill wells to take out that water. With CAP water credits, they just deliver it to you through the canal, and you just take it in right at your plant, at Signal View or Brown Road.
I heard you mention earlier the divorce with Phoenix over the Val Vista Water Treatment Plant. Maybe offline, I'd like to hear more about that.
It's called a separation. It's like Carlos started it, so we hired him and brought it back.
Well, I, I'm very, I, I live across the street from that plant, so I'm familiar with it. But it's, when I think of that location, I think of more fresh, clean water that's being produced. I wasn't aware that we had a lot of effluent at that location. Is there also a wastewater treatment plant at that location?
No.
It's purely water. That's purely water plant.
Okay, well then, then I guess, what's the, what's the source of the reclaimed water at Val Vista and McDowell that we're spending $60 million to pump down to the Greck?
The source of the reclaimed water comes from the Northwest Plant, which you, when you see that map there, it comes from the west.
Oh, sure. Oh, I see.
But that is, that's the line that brings the Northwest water to Grasp.
It's just off the map.
I see the green line coming from the, from the left. So we're, we're bringing that from our wastewater plant.
So we're just tying in at an existing main that we have there, that green main, and going south.
So in the past, we were pumping the effluent from the wastewater treatment plant up to the Grasp. I'm with you now. Thank you.
All right, so.
I, sorry, one question on that previous slide as well. On the reclaimed water, I know part of our big push is the Elliott Tech Corridor. And we're pushing to bring in, you know, a lot of data centers. And obviously, they're heavy water users. As we reclaim the water down there, is there an opportunity to work with them to give the data centers reclaimed water? Or does it not work that way? Can they use reclaimed water for their, for their sources? Or is it deemed like too dirty?
My feeling is that it may be too dirty, because I think that they go through a treatment process on site to get the water even to a cleaner level. So basically reclaimed water has a lot of total dissolved solids. It's, and they would like to strip that out. And the only way to get that out is with a RO process. So my feeling is that they probably wouldn't want to have reclaimed water.
Yeah, I just know that these, as we talk about, to Jen's point, the sustainability of the future of our city, right? And we're investing heavily in the electricity and the power down in that area. But one of the things that we don't keep in mind is the heavy usage of water that comes along with some of the data centers. So I, I would be curious, and it's a lot shorter of a distance to go from that reclaimed water plant on the south side there, you know, if, if there's any opportunity to work with those data centers. Maybe there's another filtering process.
To go back from Greenfield back to Elliott? Is that what you're suggesting?
Uh.
Because that's where, that's where it's being delivered. The CAP is being delivered to Signal View. But the plan here is to deliver this water to Greenfield.
Greenfield, right.
So Greenfield is at Pecos and what is it?
German.
Jermaine. So it's, it's not, Elliott is further east of here.
Yeah, maybe I'm misinterpreting this map. I'm honestly a little confused by the reclaimed water line. I had some of the same questions as John. But so is that treatment plant on the bottom right-hand part of the screen, that's not a water, that's not the reclaimed?
That's the one in Gilbert.
The southeast.
Southeast.
Right, it's the southeast water reclamation.
So what happens here is that basically the water from the Northwest Plant would go along that green line that you see on top. Then we would pipe it down the red line, and it gets to the southeast plant. And from there, outside of the map, it goes to Greenfield. And from Greenfield, gets pumped to the Greck. So there's, we just couldn't fit everything in this, in this slide.
I'll figure it out offline. It sounds a lot more complicated than what, I'm clearly not understanding what we're talking about. And I don't want to waste any more time.
Councilmember Whitaker, the, the real issue is, is we're going to give them, we're going to give the, the Gila River Indian Company, I mean, community, our effluent. And in exchange for that, we're getting water rights for additional CAP water. And that's the water that will be used.
That's a better deal for us than selling it as effluent to anyone else. Because we want to get credits for CAP.
So is that?
Remember what the exchange rate?
Four to five. For every 4 million, 5 billion gallons of dirty, or effluent that we give them, we get 4 million gallons of CAP allocation.
So is that 36-inch pipe giving them the water, or is that receiving the water?
Giving.
Getting the water.
So it's going, it's pumping up?
Yeah, we're taking it from, from Riverview, and taking it all the way down to.
Down, north to south.
Yeah, north to south.
I grab it.
Like I said, I'm confused. I'll take it offline, because clearly I'm not keeping up with you guys.
Yeah, we'll set something up on chat.
All right, so moving on to Signal Viewed. As you're aware, the plant successfully came online in June of 2018. And from the start, we ramped up the plant to its full capacity right away to meet summer demands. So it was really timely that we got the plant done right before the summer. As you can see from the chart there, you see that blue line, that is the system demand in the southeast Mesa area. The, the blue bars is the capacity of the Signal Viewed Plant, and the yellow bars is groundwater capacity. So if you look at 2018, we were operating the plant, Signal Viewed, at its maximum capacity of 24 MGD, and supplementing the system with an additional 2 to 3 MGD of groundwater. So, you know, our goal is to conserve groundwater for drought, for emergencies, for canal outages, and so forth. So our master plan, with that in mind, is recommending an expansion of the Signal Viewed Plant to 48 MGD in 2025. Okay? As you're aware, East Mesa is growing at a very fast rate. Just in 2018, one year, we have 10% increase in the number of water accounts there, and 15% in additional demand. So we have serious pressure to get a, a plant expansion going as soon as we can. So under this concept, we would start the design in 2021, and we would hope to start up the plant in 2025. So that kind of gives you a picture of what another big need that we have relative to Signal View.
I'm sorry, I have a question. And I think this goes to the point that, that Councilmember Duff was raising earlier with regard to our, at what point are we facing a crisis for our water portfolio, and meeting the, the demands of the community as a whole? And I know this chart is, reflects exclusively the Signal Viewed Water Treatment Plant, and the capacity versus the demand. And it looks like by combine, well, when you combine the treatment plant with the groundwater capacity, the, the pumping from the wells, we're well, it's off the chart somewhere, as to at what point we would exceed our capacity. Is that, am I reading this correctly?
Yeah, so the good news is, Mayor, the Water Department has done a projection for build-out for Mesa, which we estimate now to be 20 years.
2040.
2040. So about 20, say in the next 20 years. And so, and I think, also explain maybe Jake, the difference between on-project and off-project, because if you're on one side of, I don't know, whatever, Gilbert Road, whatever it is, that could water, we can meet that capacity. That's, that's not the concern. It's everything in the higher growing areas. So that's why we focus on this particular.
Right, we have the, we're really well-suited in the city zone, which is the SRP plant that we get through Val Vista. That is, the eastern canal is the boundary between the city zones and all the eastern zones. So we're in good shape there. What this chart shows is what the current conditions are with what we have today. We, we are doing some assumptions on what, if we were able to take full advantage of the water that we put at Grasp, that, that second bucket of water, with the exchange with the Gila River Indian Community, these lines would be more favorable. It would show you that we wouldn't go into yellow, to where we're, where we're relying on groundwater till 2040.
So, and, and we're saying, build-out is likely around 2040?
That's.
That's current plan.
Current estimate.
So even not including the Gila River allocation, we still, I mean, at 2040, we're still.
We would still, still have sufficient.
30 million gallons a day of excess capacity.
Right. We would be relying heavily on groundwater at that point, so.
Right. And is, is groundwater sustainable in perpetuity? I guess it depends on how much we pump back in.
It's a finite resource.
It's a finite resource, okay. So just to the overall sustainability question, this is a fairly optimistic picture of the southeast part of Mesa.
This is actually a very conservative estimate, just the opposite. It's a very conservative estimate, because it doesn't assume bringing that Grasp water down to Greck. With that added in here, then we avoid going into the wells. And so we stay with all the sustainable water sources that are available to us.
So I get, yeah, optimistic's the wrong word. I mean, it's actually encouraging.
Yeah, well, it says even at the worst, I mean, most conservative estimate, we still have sufficient water. Our preference is not to be tapping into groundwater, or sorry, well water as a constant source of water. Is that a better way? I don't know if I thought your word. We like, we have it as a backup, but not necessarily, we prefer not to have it as the, to meet the specific ongoing needs. It's, it's better for us as, kind of the philosophy, right, as a backup. When we need to take down plants, when we need to do, when there's canal.
Get canal out.
Canal's out, we use it for that purpose.
Well, I mean, as a region, we're all very much involved in the drought contingency plan conversation. So I think it would be, this is good information for us to have, to put into context, is what are Mesa's potential concerns. But, and so this is good information for southeast. I'd like to see it as a city as a whole, just so we know that, well, yes, that at some point, the lines intersect in a very disturbing way. I don't see that happening. Not, but I, I would like to see that graph.
Okay.
Thank you.
You can do that.
One last comment on this. And I understand, one comment on, on the water credits that we have. I mean, it's, yes, we have the rights to the water, but in the worst-case scenario for our state, if there is no water, the credits really kind of, it doesn't really matter. The second of all, I think as a city, and I, I'm just learning a little bit, but I think we could make some impact just within our building codes of how water is retained on-site and reused, like a capture on the site of the building, and maybe reuse that in their landscaping right there, without it going back to a treatment plant, without getting, and using it immediately, and through toilets, and through, maybe there's things that we can do within our building codes, especially with significant expansion, to be more conservation-minded and put less pressure on this process. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Councilmember Duff. That's good comments. I wanted, you know, we've gotten on this water, and I, I think that one of the conversations is how self-reliant are we as a city in meeting our water needs as a community? And water, as we know, is a finite resource. So some of my thoughts were, you know, we, we have Grasp up north and Recharge Basin. Do we ever consider creating a recharge basin in the southeast part of the valley? Is that feasible to run some of this effluent or reuse water down there? You know, as you're pumping water, obviously, the water table may drop in certain areas. Then, then you have to spend money on infrastructure and re-drilling costs. That's some of the concern, because it costs money to do that, as the water table drops. So how can we leverage raising that water table in certain areas, so that you have the city side, and you have the, what was it, east of the eastern?
Eastern zones.
Eastern zone. That seems to have a very finite water supply with that. So it'd be, it'd be nice to have some type of recharge down there, along with sending water down to Greck, because the exchange of water with the tribe, the tribes will have pretty an infinite supply of water, based on their allocations. But as is mentioned, if there are any real shortages on the Colorado water, then it's going to impact every municipal, municipality and city in the valley, and even clear down to Tucson. So I guess some of my thoughts are, are we looking at some recharge areas in the southeast part? Is it even feasible to do? I, I don't know, Mr. Brady.
Yeah, so.
And.
Yeah.
And creating something, the partnerships, and then the movement of water with RWCD and et cetera.
Those are all great points. I think the way I look at it says this, is with, even with our water credits, and where we are because of what we have in the city zone, and where we, and, and how much we rely upon CAP. What it, what it does mean, though, that when there are drought contingencies, and we go through the different levels, Mesa will be one of the very last ones that are impacted and cutbacks.
Yeah.
So from that perspective, we're in a strong position, right? And so it pays our strength of water portfolio. But we want to keep strengthening that. Now, the, the agreement that we have with Greck, we see that is a very wise opportunity for us to take, we need to take full advantage of that. So I guess when we think about effluent, the water that comes out of our treatment plants, we think of that as a commodity that we, we've already made a commitment to Greck to exchange for. And we, we still think that exchange is a significant benefit to the city, to exchange our effluent for these credits from the CAP. So I think when we think about what we're doing with our water coming out of our plants, our first priority right now, until we maximize that agreement, is to get it to the Grecks, you know, as efficiently as we can. So until I think we've maximized, I don't even, is there, I'm assuming there's a limit somewhere in that agreement, but I don't, we've never come close to it, so I don't know.
We're nowhere near.
Nowhere near it. So I guess our first priority for the benefit of the citizens of Mesa, because the CAP water, obviously, if we, the more of that we have rights to and can get delivered, we can use that for any purposes, right? It can be delivered to homes, businesses, industry, and, and we have the full range of opportunity with that. So we see that as our first priority, is to maximize that agreement. So we think that benefits the entire system and all the residents and businesses of Mesa the best. And so that's why you see us, every thought we have about what we're going to do with our effluent is really directed towards how do we take advantage of that agreement that was set up back in the, how long ago? A long time ago.
Long time.
So that's kind of our focus. Our, our philosophy has always been, let's get every drop, if we can. And obviously, it's been difficult, or not difficult, it's just the logistics of moving effluent from the north side of the city, down to the southern area, to the Greenfield Plant, where then we can deliver it in a big pipe to the Gila's. So that's kind of been our first priority, because we think we get, that is the most sustainable long-term for the city, is to get more of those CAP credits back to the city. That's the best exchange we can get at the end of the day. Now, what's happened is, is industry and homes have gotten very efficient use of their water, which is good. But it also means we've gotten, in our projections, less of the wastewater coming to our plants. And then the plant, stuff they do send to us is very concentrated.
Concentrated, yes.
And so we spend more time with chemicals and procedures or whatever to treat it. But again, we're, we still see that we have a great opportunity. It's a unique agreement that we have with the Gila's because of our location, and because of this historic agreement, that we could, if every drop of effluent we can get to the plant in exchange for that CAP water, we think is in our best interest. It is a big pipe, but frankly, when you, I think we're going to run some analysis on.
Yes.
Even that 66 million dollar, what that means as far as you say, we spent 66 million dollars, but now you're going to get CAP water for, you know, how much water is that? And what does that mean? We think that the return on investment will be significant for the city. Now, if we can get it through RWCD, it'll lesser, it even makes it better for us. So that's kind of, Jake, correct me if I'm wrong, that's kind of our guiding.
That is correct.
Principles of how we think about effluent and, and helping to create the long-term sustainability for the city.
Right. And Mr. Brady, I would add that with the exchange water, and we're, and the use of, our use of it is going to be cheaper than any cap water that we're currently receiving, or whatever those rates are going to be when there is ever a shortage. That water is going to be cheaper. And it's going to be ours.
I think we're all starting to see why this is such a good idea. But so, I can see the $2 million for the study, possibly the $5 million for design. At some point, we start talking, we got to go to the voters for some bond.
Right. And that's the fall, we would come, that would be part of the package.
Or maybe.
Water pipelines, this water replacement lines, this, maybe some planning, plant modifications. We've got a whole list. You know, Jake's already shown me his billion-dollar list, and so we're trying to work with that and see where we can come within that.
Likely that staff will be recommending a 2020 water bond.
Absolutely.
For the design and construction of this.
We, we need, as you saw, and I think Carlos covered some of the slides previously, after this year, or this coming year, we'll spend down most of what's available.
On to the maintenance issue that we described earlier.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
I know we've beat this slide to death, so I'm just going to ask one real quick question. And it's not on this one, but it's on the map. I'm assuming, and I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this, but you guys have already worked with transportation to make sure that this, or if it's possible to move this water line from north to south using the streets. using the streets that are the oldest, that are we, are we redoing the streets at the same time that we're replacing the pipe in the ground, right?
Councilmember Whitaker, yes, we will be working with transportation and engineering when we're doing the alignment study. We're going to find the best and cheapest corridor. We're going to have less impact with competing underground infrastructure.
Sure. And I assume that this, there's obviously multiple paths to get from up there to down there. I assume this is just a rough draft.
It's just a concept.
Sure, thank you.
Good news to everybody that lives on Val Vista.
Bad news, we're going to tear it up. Good news, you're going to get a new street. That's why RWC would really be nice, so.
So.
Thank you.
I know, we're going to do it.
Switching to another citywide rehab need. So akin to the distribution system, this would be the collection system. We have more advantages with the collection system because it's a gravity system, as I mentioned earlier. So as opposed to trenching through the street and laying new pipe, abandoning old pipe, in most cases, 95% of the cases for the collection system, you can run a liner through, expand that liner and extend the life of that pipe by 30 years, 40 years, 50 years. The other story is sewer manholes. So we have 32,000 sewer manholes. So we have an annual program that goes and does a detailed assessment of those structures. And we prioritize the most badly deteriorated structures. And we do any kind of structural rehab and recoat those manholes to extend the service life of those assets as well.
And just a couple of thoughts here. As we plan our capital numbers for water reclamation plans and water treatment plans, typically what we're doing now is, is we're developing facility plans for each one of our plants. And these facility plans are taking a look at every process, looking at efficiency of the process, what improvements are needed, also what may come down the pipe from a regulatory standpoint as well. And all of that is really the basis of our facilities capital programs in the future. We also have a very comprehensive asset management program that right now we are, you know, basically using it. And that gives us our life cycle, life cycle replacement for all of the equipment at the plants. So armed with those two things, the facility plans and the asset management information, we're able to come up with what we need for our treatment plants and that goes into the CAP. So just a planning that on this slide.
Okay, so for our fiscal year 1920, significant budget changes. We've already touched on a lot of these, that obviously we've been completing some very large, significant projects on the water side. And so now that debt service cost is beginning to come on board. It's been in the forecast, so it didn't surprise anybody. We touched on the increase in the water commodity between the CAP and the SRP water. Kind of a unique one on the Val Vista Water Treatment Plant. We're faced with a six-week outage on the CAP canal this coming year in the November, December timeframe. So both of our water treatment plants will be offline. And we're going to have to flow more water through the Val Vista Treatment Plant. Therefore, our costs will go up with our agreement over there. In addition to that, they did have some cost increases, so our user rate also went up. But that's going to kind of be a unique situation for us this year. We do have an increase in our chemical cost out at the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant. It's coming up to the end of its first year of operation. And one of the items we have out there is we use a granulated activated carbon in the filter beds. There's an anticipated 5% loss of that media just through the normal operation of that plant. So now we're coming up to that first year of replacement and we need some additional funding to replenish that media. Additionally.
Excuse me, Mr. Thompson.
Real quick, as we approach fire season, if we have another catastrophic fire on the rim, how is that going to impact your budget numbers? Because obviously, the, the last major fire we had found its way in, the ashes found its way into the Verde and really disrupted our water, our treatment plants. How significant are, are we, are we looking at that, building that into our budget on the front end so that we're not surprised on the back end if something like that were to happen again?
Councilmember Thompson, yes. When we sit down and we look at these forecasts, we build our budgets kind of based on a worst-case scenario for that exact reason. We've been real fortunate for the last few years where the inbound water quality has been really good for us. We've seen some significant savings in the use of the chemicals. But we do plan for a worst-case scenario. So we're in constant contact with those water suppliers and what they see, based in their forecast, what they see coming down the river to us. So in addition, in 1920, we were proposing to add two field worker twos in our distribution group and associated tools and vehicles. Along with the growth on the system, some of our challenges is maintaining the routine maintenance within that distribution system. And this crew's big task would be to continue the maintenance, routine ongoing maintenance on the fire hydrants. Right now, we're having to pull some people off of our valve maintenance crew, move them over to maintain the fire hydrants. And that's a pretty significant item that we'd like to see working when necessary. So we're hoping to add a couple more people so that we can maintain that two-year cycle, which maintains our ISO certification. So on the wastewater side, our significant 1920 budget changes. We do have some debt service increase coming on. We're well into the construction side of the Greenfield expansion. In the forecast, that's expected to grow even more in the next couple of years. The 91st Avenue plant, again, Phoenix had some budget increases, so our rates increased slightly. But what we're doing now as part of our ongoing maintenance program is we pull our water reclamation plants offline or reduce the flow. So this program, we then have to send some additional flow to the Schrog facility to be treated. We did have some one-time dollars in fiscal year 1819 at Greenfield for some significant overhaul. So that's what that reduction is. Unfortunately, we did identify an additional overhaul and opportunity to get it done this year. So we're looking to add $250,000 total, $105,000 on Mesa share back into that Greenfield operation. This is the existing aeration basin mixers have been in service since the plant started. And Carlos touched on the fact that there's some new ones coming online. We've got an opportunity to get, when those are done, we can pull the existing offline, do that overhaul, that rehab, and then everything is functional when the complete expansion is done and the plant's fully operational.
Seth, just a moment, because we've been talking a lot about wastewater and affluent. So again, 91st Avenue is in Phoenix.
Correct.
But we have a contractual obligation to provide a certain amount of affluent to 91st Avenue, right? So that, that's just part of being part, partnership of you being able to utilize that plant and meeting the obligations of Palverdi Nuclear Power Plant. Is that correct?
Correct.
So there is a component piece that we are actually, we are obligated to always send to them regardless, right?
Correct. Snapshot of our financial overview. On the water side, we are projecting that we're going to come in under on our revenue projections. Again, we've kind of touched on the fact we had a very cold rainy winter. We've seen a lower demand and use per account even lower over that time cycle. I'm hopeful that the warmer weather coming might help us recover, but I think that's a large task to overcome. But if there's a positive side to that, our operating costs are also going to come in slightly under budget. We're having to produce less water, move less water, treat less water. One of our other significant savings is going to be the refunding or the de-feasement of the bonds that the OMB department works very hard with us on that. So for 1819, our projection was to actually draw down the fund balance by almost $3.5 million. But given everything that's going to take place, we should grow the fund balance by 2.7 at the end of the year. The wastewater side, we're actually seeing a positive results on the revenues. But to remind you, the residential side, their billing is based on last year's winter water average. So now that we've just come through a cold rainy winter, those averages are being recalculated. So starting with the April billings, we may see a slight decrease, but I think we'll still come in above. We are also under budget on our operating expenses over here. And the same thing on the debt service transfer. So on the wastewater side, where it was budgeted to draw down the fund balance by nearly 1.5 million, it's looking like it will grow by 4 million. And I think that's all we had. We're available for more questions.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Very informational. I think that was a very interesting topic. I'm sure prompted a lot more, probably some field trips and some more additional questions. Mr. Freeman, do you have a question?
I do. Jake, is the reserve fund on here for your department line item? The reserve fund for your department?
The reserve?
Yeah.
So we combined.
The reserves for all enterprises at the, when we budget, we, so include all of them together. So energy, water, water resources and, who am I missing?
Solid waste.
Solid waste, sorry, sorry, Scott. And so at the end of 1718, we ended up with about a 30% ending reserve, which meant about over $111 million in fund balance reserves, 30%.
For combined?
Yeah, for our water, wastewater, solid waste, electric and natural gas.
Okay, thank you.
And then we're estimating, just for the sake of the council purposes, that we're projected, that we're projected as a slight increase. You just saw some contributions back to the reserves. This can be, we're estimating about 31%. So we're in a 30% range. Last year, we anticipate that's where we'll be at the end of this next year and very close to that in our proposed budget for the following year. So one of the reasons when we talk about rate increases in the fall, and one of the reasons we're telling council today, we don't, we're not, we're fine with not seeking any rate increases in residential. And certainly, we'll have, we want to have discussion in the fall, though. There are some other non-residential categories that have fallen behind that we probably need to look at adjusting.
Okay, that's a big, what you said is just, is very significant. So we're, you, given the fund balances that you see right now, we're, and I know we've decided we're going to talk about rates February.
Well, fall with implementation in February.
Okay.
So the idea is do it in fall so that when we implement it, it's the low use season, low part of the season.
But at least right now, you could see, given the fund, the reserves that we have, possibly not pursuing a residential water rate increase.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next, I believe we have environmental management and sustainability.
You want to maybe?
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry, it's been about an hour and a half that we've been sitting here. Why don't we take a 10-minute break? We'll start up at 9:05.
It's recycling you want to hear about.
It's at 8:55, we'll reconvene at 9:05. Thank you.
Scott, are you marketing this through Nextdoor and other avenues? Because I, you know, as I look at Nextdoor, because I want to see what the community is saying, there's, there's a real interest to do recycling. What are you doing to market this to get more customers to take advantage of this facility?
We have been using social media for outreach to the facility. I will also say we have, it hasn't been a full-out blitz of advertising for the facility as we've been bringing up operations and kind of learning the process of what we're doing. But that is the plan going forward, is to increase the outreach that we're doing to make sure all residents understand that this is a program that is available to them and that they can participate in it. And social media is a big part of that.
A quick question. Again, let me just say kudos for this, everyone I know just loves this program. And I, I suspect that if it's not being fully utilized currently, that it soon will be, and that you'll need to expand the hours over time, and that as, as the community becomes more aware of this, they'll embrace it even more than they are. Earlier this week, several of us attended an event for better ways to dispose of prescription medications. And I know we've got a couple of drugstores in town that are, have drop points. There's four police stations that have drop points. And I asked, well, why isn't this more, you know, in every drugstore? And they said, well, the cost of incinerating, you know, this is a hazardous material, and the cost of disposing of it correctly is significant. And I know we're already in that business, because we've got four drop boxes at our police stations. But this seems like an appropriate, maybe hazardous material that we might want to add to this, to our hazardous material recycling facility as well.
Mayor, that's a very good question, because the, the one thing that we do not accept at the facility that we accepted at the events is prescription medication.
Yeah.
And the reason for that is we had to have an officer at all of the events as we took those materials in. The regulations require, because some of the, the prescriptions you receive are controlled substances, and as we all know, there's an issue with controlled substances within, you know, the country. So, the cost to have an off-duty police officer at the facility at the times that we're open was a financial decision that we made of not accepting those materials here. In addition to that, it was because there are other opportunities for residents to dispose of this material. So, it wasn't something that we felt that there was no other opportunity for them, that there is opportunity. So, if you do come to the, the facility and you have prescription medications, we let you know the locations at which you can bring those at those substations, so.
Okay, thank you. I knew there was an answer to that question. Although, I'd just point out that there are some drugstores that are doing it now, and I assume that they don't have public safety people managing those.
Yeah, I think there is a exemption because of the-
It's DEA, DEA has to be there.
So, is the pharmacist qualified then?
It's not. So, when they transfer the drugs at Walgreens, we were just there, the three of us, there's a DEA officer, the pharmacist, and the third party who picks it up. So, there's continuity, and then it gets packaged and then sent away.
I can, we can continue to look into this, because I know that it is an issue. Again, when we talk about things that cross over multiple areas, I know it also becomes an issue with water quality, because a lot of people then flush these things down the toilet. They go to our wastewater treatment plants, and our plants aren't designed to treat for that. So, I can make sure that our staff continues to look at options and what we can do. But at this point, that is the one thing that we don't accept that we accepted at the events.
Yeah, thank you. I wonder if the drugstore model might apply to our facility. So, I appreciate you looking into that. Mr. Luna?
One more, the one that I trouble is the plastic bags. It made me crazy. I, you know, I have a whole bag of plastic bags. We currently don't accept those, right? Are you currently working with grocery stores to, to collect those? Or how do we, how do we, what do we, how do we deal with plastic bags?
Plastic bags, Mayor, Councilmember Luna, it's a great question. Plastic bags are accepted at most of your retailers. So, if you go to a Bash's, a Walmart, a Target, when you first walk into that store, there is a box that you can put those into. So, I know with my family, the first thing we try and do is refuse them. So, in other words, if you have one, one item and they want to put it into a bag, tell them, no, I don't need a bag. But then the second thing is you collect those bags in the bags that you have and bring them back to the grocery store, because that's something that is not accepted. That's one of the biggest issues that we have, as we start talking about the Blue Barrel, is plastic bags that go into the Blue Barrel. So, the best thing you can do is bring it back to where you got it from, which is typically a grocery store or your, your larger retailer, Walmart and Target. It's, it's because when it goes into the recycling facility, if you've visited one of those, there's a lot, a lot of moving parts associated with that facility to separate out the glass and the metals, the cardboards, the paper. Those plastic bags get caught up into that equipment and they clog it. And then it requires the entire plant to be shut down, and literally, people going in there with razor knives and cutting those plastic bags apart so that they can then get the equipment running again. Other things that do that, I was going to save this a little bit for the Blue Barrel, wires, cords, coat hangers, those are big problems that we have with contamination, because they do, they literally can shut down the recycling facility. All right, so our, we'll get right into recycling now. Our next performance measure is our diversion rate, overall blue and green barrel diversion rate. This is a running three-year average. I've tried to think of a good way to put this, but I'll just, you know, lay out the math associated with it. So, because it's a rolling three-year average, our target continues to decline, and we continue to actually miss that target. The math that is driving this is with the increasing population, and really with our consumer-based economy, with the economy being good over the last several years, you tend to see increases in the amount of solid waste that is created. So, we've seen an increase in trash tons of over 10% over the last five, six years. But our recycling tonnage has stayed relatively the same, and actually has dropped a little bit over that amount of time. So, we're seeing increases in the trash tonnage, and the recycling tonnage is staying level. A lot of this becomes because of new packaging, that things are lighter weight than what they used to be. And so, the water bottle that you drink from, a lot of the packaging that you have is lighter weight than what it used to be, so that reduces that tonnage. But in addition to that, there's just more trash that's being created, if that makes sense to you. So, we'll get right into with recycling. This is a chart that I showed you as part of our budget presentation last year, where recycling has gone from a revenue to an expenditure. You'll see from the chart, we had estimated that we would be, we would spend about $550,000 on recycling this year. That was our original forecast, our updated forecast, what's it, it's about $400,000. But for next year, we're projecting we'll be close to $1 million for that expense for recycling. Well, we have new contracts, Mayor, we have new contracts that have come into place. We no longer, so our previous contracts, we used to have what we would call a floor price. So, there was a price at which we would get paid per ton for the commodity. And that was a guaranteed price, it would never go below that floor. We do not have any contracts left that have that floor price with them. They all now have a processing fee and then a revenue share associated with them. What we are seeing with today's market is that the processing fee, the amount of money spent on the processing fee is higher than what we are receiving for revenue from the material. And so, therefore, we're paying money for recycling, and that's where that's coming from.
Thank you. Jeremy?
Yeah, so on the macroeconomic side of things, I think you spoke last year to the fact that China is not taking in recyclables in the amount that they used to, right? Which is pausing the price.
That is great. One of the big drivers is, is that they reduce the contamination rate that they will, that they have that is acceptable for the material to come into the country. So, the contamination rate now is .05%. And if it has higher than a .05% contamination rate, it's being rejected. And so, the, our partners in recycling are having trouble meeting that .5%. And so, now some of that material just isn't being sent over there, because they know that it will not meet that contamination rate. They don't want to put it on a boat, which it literally goes on a boat to China, and then have it sent back. So, that, that's the big driver. And as we talk about the plastic bags, the hangers, the wires, those sorts of things, that's the biggest thing with recycling right now, is trying to reduce that contamination rate. Because you're, you're, you're paying a processing fee for anything that is non-recyclable. And then in addition to that, you're then paying a disposal fee, because it's not being sent off as a commodity. It is, it's, it's not something that they process into a commodity at those recycling facilities. So, you're kind of getting, you're not kind of, you are getting hit twice with it. You pay a processing fee, and then you pay a disposal fee for that contamination.
Sure. And so, is the increased cost related to us trying to make that material clean into the, what? .05? Is that what you said? Is, is that part of the increased cost, like trying to make? And do we measure that before we're able to ship it off? Or there's no way to measure the material for its contamination rate prior to sending it to China?
So, in order to meet the lower contamination rates, our private partners are telling us they're having to slow down the lines, so they're processing less material. There's less throughput going through their facilities on an hourly basis, which increases their cost. In addition to that, they're telling us that they have to hire more people. So, there's more people along the line that are picking material that is not recyclable off of the line before it gets into the machines. So, that is increasing the cost. I think with the, the partners that we have, they, they are just realizing that they, that, that 0.5% contamination rate, that they don't meet it, they know that ahead of time. And so, that material just is not going there. So, that's, that's one of the issues, is we're trying, they're, they're trying, and we are trying, we're partnering regionally even to identify, is there other ways in which we can do recycling? Are there things that could be more, you know, in my, my professional opinion, instead of sending it to China, can we create local markets for some of this material?
Right, and that's my other question, is I, you know, there's been a massive increase in online purchasing through Amazon, it's clear in their revenue sales, right? And obviously, every single one of those packaged, well, some of them come with a plastic bag, but a lot, but a lot of them come in cardboard boxes. Is there a more efficient process that we can create to start taking the cardboard specifically? Like, are there vendors that work with Amazon that you can create a supply chain to just pump that right back to Am, I mean, Amazon is-
a grocery store or your larger retailer, Walmart and Target.
Is that makes money, why?
It's because when it goes into the recycling facility, if you've visited one of those, there's a lot, a lot of moving parts associated with that facility to separate out, the glass and the metals, the cardboards, the paper. Those plastic bags get caught up into that equipment and they clog it, and then it requires the entire plant to be shut down and literally people going in there with razor knives and cutting those plastic bags apart, so that they can then get the equipment running again. Other things that do that, I was gonna save this a little bit for the blue barrel, wires, cords, coat hangers, those are big problems that we have with contamination, because they do. They literally can shut down the recycling facility. So, our, we'll get right into recycling now. Our next performance measure is our diversion rate, overall blue and green barrel diversion rate. This is a running three-year average. I've tried to think of a good way to put this, but I'll just, you know, lay out the math associated with it. So, because it's a rolling three-year average, our target continues to decline and we continue to actually miss that target. The math that is driving this is with the increasing population and really with our consumer-based economy, with the economy being good over the last several years, you tend to see increases in the amount of solid waste that is created. So, we've seen an increase in trash tons of over 10% over the last five, six years, but our recycling tonnage has stayed relatively the same and actually has dropped a little bit over that amount of time. So, we're seeing increases in the trash tonnage and the recycling tonnage is staying level. A lot of this becomes because of new packaging, that things are lighter weight than what they used to be, and so the water bottle that you drink from, a lot of the packaging that you have is lighter weight than what it used to be, so that reduces that tonnage. But in addition to that, there's just more trash that's being created, if that makes sense to you. So, we'll get right into with recycling. This is a chart that I showed you as part of our budget presentation last year, where recycling has gone from a revenue to an expenditure. You'll see from the chart, we had estimated that we would be, we would spend about $550,000 on recycling this year. That was our original forecast. Our updated forecast, what's it, it's about $400,000, but for next year, we're projecting we'll be close to $1 million for that expense for recycling.
Why wasn't just our sharp increase year over year?
Well, we have new contracts, Mayor, we have new contracts that have come into place. We no longer, so our previous contracts, we used to have what we would call a floor price. So, there was a price at which we would get paid per ton for the commodity, and that was a guaranteed price. It would never go below that floor. We do not have any contracts left that have that floor price with them. They all now have a processing fee and then a revenue share associated with them. What we are seeing with today's market is that the processing fee, the amount of money spent on the processing fee, is higher than what we are receiving for revenue from the material, and so therefore, we're paying money for recycling, and that's where that's coming from.
Thank you. Jeremy?
Yeah, so on the macroeconomic side of things, I think you spoke last year to the fact that China is not taking in recyclables in the amount that they used to, right? Which is pausing the price.
That is great. One of the big drivers is, is that they reduce the contamination rate that they will, that they have that is acceptable for the material to come into the country. So, the contamination rate now is .05%, and if it has higher than a .05% contamination rate, it's being rejected. And so, the, our partners in recycling are having trouble meeting that .5%. And so, now some of that material just isn't being sent over there, because they know that it will not meet that contamination rate. They don't want to put it on a boat, which it literally goes on a boat to China, and then have it sent back. So, that, that's the big driver. And as we talk about the plastic bags, the hangers, the wires, those sorts of things, that's the biggest thing with recycling right now, is trying to reduce that contamination rate, because you're, you're paying a processing fee for anything that is non-recyclable, and then in addition to that, you're then paying a disposal fee, because it's not being sent off as a commodity. It is, it's, it's not something that they process into a commodity at those recycling facilities. So, you're kind of getting, you're not kind of, you are getting hit twice with it. You pay a processing fee and then you pay a disposal fee for that contamination.
Sure. And so, is the increased cost related to us trying to make that material clean into the, what, .05? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Is that part of the increased cost, like trying to make, and do we measure that before we're able to ship it off, or there's no way to measure the material for its contamination rate prior to sending it to China?
So, in order to meet the lower contamination rates, our private partners are telling us they're having to slow down the lines, so they're processing less material. There's less throughput going through their facilities on an hourly basis, which increases their cost. In addition to that, they're telling us that they have to hire more people. So, there's more people along the line that are picking material that is not recyclable off of the line before it gets into the machines. So, that is increasing the cost. I think with the, the partners that we have, they, they are just realizing that they, that 0.5% contamination rate, that they don't meet it, they know that ahead of time, and so that material just is not going there. So, that's, that's one of the issues, is we're trying, they're, they're trying and we are trying, we're partnering regionally even to identify, is there other ways in which we can do recycling? Are there things that could be more, you know, in my, my professional opinion, instead of sending it to China, can we create local markets for some of this material?
Right, and that's my other question, is I, you know, there's been a massive increase in online purchasing through Amazon, it's clear in their revenue sales, right? And obviously, every single one of those packaged, well, some of them come with a plastic bag, but a lot, but a lot of them come in cardboard boxes. Is there a more efficient process that we can create to start taking the cardboard specifically? Like, are there vendors that work with Amazon that you can create a supply chain to just pump that right back to Am, I mean, Amazon is shipping out, I have to imagine, you know, thousands or hundreds of thousands of pounds of cardboard on a daily basis, right?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, you are correct. You know, there's a lot of cardboard boxes that are being delivered to every house across the country now with Amazon and just online sales in general. One of the issues with cardboard, we previously had just cardboard vendors that we would take material to, so we had cardboard customers, or at our drop-off centers, we would have cardboard front-load bins and we would bring it to. Those even were not able to meet the contamination rate. If you think about the box that comes to you and the packaging material, so you have the box, but then you've got whatever item that is inside that box, and then there's some packing material around it. Amazon has gone a lot with the air-filled plastic liner that's in there. If that's not pulled out, when that box then gets put into a front-load bin, or it's put into your blue barrel, then it goes into a truck and it gets smashed, really, there's, there's no way to know that that is there until that cardboard gets processed. And so, that becomes another issue associated with it, is as that cardboard starts to get processed, now you have all this packaging material that was inside of it, that is a contaminant, again, can shut down, it can do one of two things. It can shut down the, the facility, because that plastic gets caught up in all the gears and pulleys that are associated with the facility, or it, if it gets through the facility, it is a contaminant that then gets discovered when it gets dropped off to whatever its final destination for recycling is, and at times can get that load then rejected because of the contamination.
So, I guess my question, specific to cardboard, is the cardboard more profi, is it, I guess, do you break down the profitability by commodity? Like, is the cardboard, say hypothetically, you just did cardboard recycling, would the chart change and turn positive if you just did one specific commodity, like cardboard or glass or something else?
There are definitely commodities that are worth more money than others. So, cardboard is worth more than glass. Glass is one of those commodities that really doesn't have a value to it currently. Even, we have received some of the bills from our processors that we are charged for the ultimate glass disposal. Probably the most valuable thing that in, is in there is the cans, the aluminum cans, is the most valuable commodity that we have, but it's not the largest makeup. I guess if you looked at it from a, you know, kind of as a chart, what do we have the most of that has a value, you would be correct in that that cardboard is the value. When you look at the quantities that we're receiving versus the value that we have, cardboard would be one of those ones that would be a high level. So, one, one of the things that we, we're gonna have to start having some discussions about is what goes into the blue barrel and what does not go into the blue barrel. But to, you know, our previous point, right now with the program that we have, we're getting materials into the blue barrel that aren't supposed to be there. So, to tell people that there's additional things, especially glass, which I can remember as a child, that was the first thing I ever remember recycling, was glass soda bottles. To tell somebody now not to recycle that i- is gonna be a difficult message to get across. And so, but I, we are hitting a point with recycling that I think we need to take a step back and look at, how are we doing this and are there ways that we can change that?
Mr. Freeman?
This is Scott, thank you. How is your contamination checks on your blue barrel? Do you send people out to check blue barrels in certain neighborhoods since the contamination rate is so high? Obviously, it starts at the user, which is the household, and then how do you control that? And then, the other point is, is do we refuse to pick up blue barrels? You know, if a driver sees contamination in there, how do you mitigate that and not upset a homeowner, so a council member doesn't get a phone call that his blue barrel wasn't picked up? And then, education is a component. I know you're constantly doing that. So, there's, I know I asked two or three questions there, so contamination check on the blue barrel, and second of all, do we refuse to pick it up until somebody complies?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Freeman, we have three quality insurance inspectors who go out and inspect in blue barrels and then at our recycling facilities. We also ask our operators, those are our eyes and ears on, on the streets every single day that are picking up this material, to identify barrels that are contaminated and to not pick them up if they are contaminated. For the first time this year, we have started a three-strikes-and-you're-out program, so if we go out there three separate occasions and see that you have contamination in your blue barrel, now this isn't just the, you know, might be one random, you know, item that is not recyclable, this is, this is folks that are truly using that blue barrel almost as a second black barrel, then we are taking that barrel from you and no longer allowing you to have that service. Now, it's been less than 100 barrels that we've taken away so far. I can tell you, people aren't happy when they get that barrel taken away, but we feel it's just, we're, we're at a point that you, you can't, you know, if you're using it as a second black barrel, you need to get a second black barrel as opposed to it being the blue barrel.
Have you considered imposing nominal fees or fines, so that, I mean, clearly, people would become more aware if they started realizing that they have to pay for putting the wrong stuff into the recycle bin?
Councilmember Whitaker, I, we have considered a couple of different options. What we're working on right now is to try and kind of put a package together for you as we come back with the rates discussion, because I think you'll see it also on our commercial side of the business, where we have recycling as offered also, that those rates, we're gonna have to take a, a look at what those rates are, and then also looking at what, you know, if, if we're going to take blue barrels away, what, is there some sort of fine or some sort of, you know, way monetarily to also motivate residents to keep that contamination out?
Scott, the, the slide that we're focusing on now that shows the actual cost, not the revenue, but the opposite, the cost of recycling, that doesn't take into account the fact that we, we are actually still saving some money by reducing the landfill fees?
Yeah.
Is that correct? Does that mitigate it, it, at all, or substantial?
Mayor, you are correct. So, the, the cost that we currently are paying per ton for recycling is less than what we are paying per ton for the disposal of solid waste. I, I will say that that delta is getting smaller and smaller. And even if we go to the next slide, maybe we'll get off this one and go on to the next slide. That first bullet point lays out that it's that market risk. What we see is great fluctuation in the commodity prices, and so, you know, we have a processing fee that we're paying to our recycling vendors, but then, because we get a revenue share, it's very dependent upon what commodity prices they're getting for those materials as to how much we're paying per ton, or if we get back to a point that we're actually making revenue off of this. And so, that market volatility, which has increased dramatically with what's been happening in, in China, falls on the city as far as, you know, if the commodity prices continue to decline, our cost for recycling will continue to increase.
Have you considered eliminating the middleman in that regard? Like, I mean, I gotta imagine the 36th largest city, we have enough recycled commodity to go direct to whoever's buying this thing, right? Or is that not the case?
Hey, Councilmember Whitaker, it, it is something that we've considered. I, this is something that I think about all the time, because this is a huge component of what we do. I will tell you, the city of Glendale had their own recycling facility that they were operating, and they were having trouble being able to get rid of those commodities. The city of Phoenix partners with Republic Services, so Republic Services operates, even though the city of Phoenix owns their facilities, Republic Service operates them for them and is the one that is selling the commodities on the market. Even though we're very large, I think in the global scheme of things, we're not that large, if that makes sense to you.
Yeah, well, what if we, I mean, like, in the water treatment side that we just heard, I mean, we partner with Queen Creek, we partner with all these other municipalities, is there not an opportunity to create a conglomerate of all the largest cities in Arizona and then perhaps find the efficiencies by having one company run that versus all of us trying to sell it on our own?
Councilmember Whitaker, we are having some conversations with other cities. Everybody is in this situation now, and so this really has, you know, sometimes it's, it's crisis that brings about change, and so with what's going on right now, we are having more conversations and trying to figure out how, how can we partner with each other? How can we make sure that we are all getting the best prices for our commodities? How can we make sure that we are lowering our contamination rates even from, from a standpoint? So, you know, a couple of different, I'm lucky and my group touches a lot of things, there's a couple of others, so like Water Use It Wisely and the Water Conservation Campaign, that's a regional campaign that's sending out the same message across the entire valley and even across the state. We're having those discussions too, because we want to make sure with recycling, it's the same thing, that you're having this common outreach between all of the cities, because what we don't want to do is confuse the residents. If you're hearing one thing from one city and one thing from another city, that just creates confusion and then people aren't going to, to do what they need to do. So, we're, we are looking on a regional basis. I agree, I think that's gonna be the, the best solution to this problem, is for us to partner with other cities and try and figure out ways that we can create economies of scale associated with it. It's, it's just, it's difficult, so we're, we're starting.
Sure.
We'll, we'll move on from the recycling side, we'll get into a, maybe a little bit better story. So, we also have the commercial side of the business that we operate. This is one of our performance measures, which is our commercial customer retention and growth. So, what this looks at is the percent change of accounts gained versus accounts lost on our commercial side. So, in other words, if we're over 100%, which is our target, we have gained more customers in that quarter than what we have lost. As you can see, over the last two and a half years, we've been over that line or at that line almost every single quarter, which means we continue to have more customers that we're adding on the commercial side than what we have been losing. So, this is, this is a good story of the service that we provide in an open market. So, again, we're competing with private solid waste customers here. If you're a business in the city of Mesa, you have a choice on who you want to use for your solid waste service, but that commercial side of the business has been growing over the last two and a half years, so I think that's a good, good sign.
This is specific to recycling, not?
No, this is specific to our commercial operation. So, this is our front-load, roll-off and barrel customers that we have, that are commercial customers, non-residential, so there's no residential in this. Our next chart is renewable energy, and so you will see from this chart that we are predicting in 2021, a significant increase in the amount of renewable energy that the city of Mesa is receiving. This is, if you recall, we were here in the fall, and SRP, Salt River Project, had a, what they called their sustainable energy offer, where we partnered on a utility-scale solar project with them, and this will dramatically increase our solar usage. So, we're adding over five megawatts of solar capacity to our solar portfolio. The neat part about this chart is, you know, over the years, we're, we're actually starting to build what I would say is a solar portfolio, so in other words, we have a combination of systems that we own, we have systems that we have what are called solar service agreements with, so a solar provider designed, built, owned and operated the system, and we just pay for the, the power that is produced from that system, and now we're also partners in a utility-scale solar project. So, we are starting to develop what I would call a portfolio for those solar projects, and so this is a good story also. Energy efficiency investments, so this is something that we do with our, our friends in facilities, and then the next slide, we'll talk about partnership with both facilities and ITD. But here are the projects that we completed in this fiscal year, where we're saying that we'll, we'll save over 686,000 kilowatt-hours, and it avoided costs of $57,000 annually, and we received about $23,000 in SRP rebates. A lot of these projects that you'll see are lighting projects that we completed, and so the neat part about this is when you look at the cost of the project, you subtract out what the SRP rebates that we receive from doing the project, and then you divide that with the savings that we'll have annually. It's about a five, just over a five-year payback on these projects that we had completed. So, one of the smart city initiatives-
Scott, real quick, Mayor, the other day, at the airport board authority meeting, they were planning about installing some new, I think it was about the, the north end parking, extended parking or something of that nature, they were wanting to put in the, the covered parking. Is there an opportunity to utilize solar panels in that location, perhaps to power streetlights or?
Mayor Kevin, Councilman Thompson, sorry. We have, that conversation had come up in our senior staff meeting, I think they're gonna look at it, but I think the economics in their initial discussion didn't work, but I may have Scott maybe collaborate with them and just see if they're considering all the issues. But you're right, they were looking at doing covered parking on the north end, the economy parking, and that, that was, that question that came about, the solar panel, so I need to go back and remember and follow with Brian on that conversation, but if Scott's kind of the expert, if he can help him out, we'll look into that.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Well, it raises the point that sometimes, if you, if you analyze it from a purely economic point of view, it's, it's hard to make the argument to do that, but I think there is a, a larger question. I think it sends a great message when people fly into Mesa, Sky Harbor, or, or-
Remember what it was, glare. That's what it was. There's concern around airports with the solar panels and the glare. I guess the FAA's come out with some concerns about how much glare reflection you can have from when you're that, especially in that parking is right on the end of the runway, that's what the issue was, so.
Good question.
Okay, our next slide that we have is energy efficiency. So, this is, again, a partnership with ITD and facilities with building automation. This was a project that was done at our Red Mountain Library, so a new building automation system that was installed at the Red Mountain Library. And what it allows us to do is to control the temperatures of the building, turn off equipment when the building's not occupied, so really trying to, to accomplish two different things, keep the building occupants comfortable, but then also not using equipment when it doesn't need to be used. So, in other words, if the building's empty, we're not cooling an empty building. You can see the savings that we have seen from this project, and this project was another one that we received over $15,000 in rebates from SRP. And this project here, when you look the same way that we had calculated it with the lighting project, this was a, just over a six-year payback associated with this project. And so, this is something that with ITD and facilities and environmental management sustainability, we're teaming together to really come back and I hope to see a lot of, a lot of ground gained in this area with building automation systems for our buildings.
Sounds like with only a six-year ROI on the capital investment on this, sounds like a great plan to roll this out to all the different facilities that the city owns. Is that in your future plan then?
That's what we're looking at, but again, there's always costs that are associated with it, and so we're trying to, we're, we're beginning the process of working with ITD, working with facilities, to really make some database decisions on what buildings does this make sense to do, and what is the, the payback going to be associated with them. So, yes, this, this is something that I hope next time, next year, we'll be coming back and presenting more information, and you'll see more successes that we've had with that partnership with those groups. But the city really is putting more resources behind this to, to make this a priority.
Is this like where you install it and then I don't have the ability to adjust my thermostat anymore, because you're like centrally controlling?
There's a social side to this type of project also, and so we will be working through, again, with sustainability, there's the economics, the environmental and the social. You just hit on the social side associated with changing building temperatures.
Are, are we looking at the new buildings that we're, like the fire station, police stations, or is that part of the, those, is this automation or solar panels part of the conversations of building?
Well, Mayor, Councilman Heredia, when we build new facilities, we have looked at this. The Fiesta Substation has a significant 219, so we have taken an opportunity to look at some of those. You, Scott, remind me, yeah, 219, I know Fiesta-
Yeah, 219, 220, Fiesta, PD, those are-
It becomes part of our consideration, yeah.
And, and I would say another one is the Household Hazardous Materials Facility, that we do, we do this, that's the same thing. So, we look at it from a standpoint, and again, a lot of what we look at is, you know, we're looking at the financial side of it and what is the payback associated with it, but then also ensuring that the building occupants, whether it be residents or employees, are, are comfortable in the building too, so you're trying to meet both of those. Couple of updates, so we have our food-to-energy project that we're currently finishing, or we're in the middle of our feasibility study. This is both a smart cities and an Imagine Mesa initiative that really has potential to be both a waste reduction and a renewable energy project. So, this, the feasibility study is scheduled to go through September of 2019, we've been getting some good data back from that. We're partnering with ASU, BASHs, United Food Bank and Mesa Public Schools on this project, and so we will be setting up some tours to go down to the Household Hazardous Materials Facility and kind of give council, if you're interested, an overview of how this project's going and what we're working on and what we've been doing. So, you'll see- So you'll see, we'll be working with your council assistants to get some time scheduled to, to do a tour and let you, give you more of a detailed update associated with this, and then of course, once the feasibility study is complete, we'll come back and let you know what the results were of that. As part of this project though, one of the things that we discovered, because our fleet currently uses a significant amount of natural gas, because the, what is it, about 85% of our fleet currently is fueled with natural gas, we have partnered with other projects using a broker to use renewable natural gas in our trucks. So even though the gas from these projects are not going directly into our natural gas system, it's being displaced someplace else. We show its usage on paper, and there is actually a monetary benefit associated with it. We're anticipating getting our first check this month from this project, which would be about $20,000 just from using, just from partnering and helping somebody else's project qualify for what's called renewable identification numbers. So that's, that's a good part to this project, just to give you an idea, that's 5% with the way that our contract works, we're getting 5% of the revenue that is generated, and so that 5% is about $20,000 a quarter, so if you do the math out to that, it can become a significant amount of money if it was something that we were able to produce that renewable natural gas ourselves and show its use in our own vehicles. So that's what this project is really ultimately trying to do down the line. Another program update from?
Excuse me, yes, Dan. Looking at vehicles that use renewable energies, electric cars for our, within the city cars, the fleet, with that, is that something we're looking at or could consider, especially since we, most of the cars are located in city center where we are on electric, instead of using gas, which would be more environmentally friendly and give back to our city instead of buying gas?
That is something, probably Frank McCray, who is going to be next on the list, that can help out with, but that's again, one of the favorite parts of my job is I get to work with a bunch of different people within the city, and so that is something else that our group has been having conversations with Frank's group in as far as electric vehicle charging stations, and then I'll, I'll let Frank maybe answer a little bit more on what's happening with the fleet and what his electric utility might be able to do.
Thank you.
Okay, so other program updates, so this also came from Imagine Mesa, we just want to give you an update. So we went from twice a week bulk pickup to four times a week bulk pickup, and we did that as a pilot, and we are proposing to go full-time with this project. It's been very successful. So on average, wait times for a resident who calls in and has something, a bulk item that they wanted to get disposed of, has gone from 11 calendar days down to four calendar days. Sometimes we can even tell them, you know, you can have that service the next day. This is a fee-based program, so they pay for the disposal, it's $23.04 to dispose of this bulk material, but it is something that has been very popular. We're utilizing over 85% of our halls with this program, and so this is something we're proposing just to keep going forward, is to have that four-day-a-week bulk pickup available for our customers. In addition to that, we rebranded what was previously known as the Clean Sweep, Green Sweep program into our neighborhood cleanup program, and we are projecting that we'll have a 94% utilization rate with that neighborhood cleanup. And this is also a program in which we partner with other departments, it might sound like a broken record, but we partner with, with code and fire and other departments within the city to provide some of those halls for areas that they see there is a need for that to happen. So this is another program that we're proud of, and it's, it's a great partnership with other departments in the city. Last slide is our, our budget slide. You can see from our original budget from 1819 to what we're projecting, that we'll come in about $600,000 less in a red number for that, of course, that's after we make our general fund transfer. A lot of this is associated with, if you saw those projections that we had with recycling versus where we're at now, because those projections with recycling were kind of the worst-case scenario, we feel that's what we have to prepare for, again, back to the market volatility associated with it. It wasn't quite as bad as what we, you know, had projected, and so that's where a lot of that savings is coming from. And then you can see from our, our, you know, next year's budget, there's still a number down there that will, will lower the enterprise fund balance a little bit, but.
Great, thank you. Additional questions? Great presentation, we'll look forward to resolving some of those questions as we proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, energy resources.
One of the best.
So how many minutes do you want me to squish this down? Her slide?
Well, I have to step out.
Good morning, I'm Frank McCray with the Energy Resources Department, and with me is John Petroff, who's our senior fiscal analyst, and also in the audience is Marty Hunter, our deputy director of electric, and also Bill Norton, our deputy director of gas, so if we need any support from them, they're available. Mesa's unique, it's the only city within the valley that has electric and gas utilities, and so that provides some unique opportunities as well as challenges. We appreciate the opportunity to come before you once a year. I like doing it in April because it gives us a chance to emphasize that April is safe digging month, and so there are requirements to call 811 and do the blue stake process before anybody excavates, so we encourage everybody to dig safely, and just so you know, there's about 215,000 separate location tasks associated with identifying and marking the underground infrastructure that the city of Mesa owns. So I like to show this slides, it shows a very close correlation between what we prioritize in our department, which is the safety of our employees and our customers in the system, the reliability that we serve our customers and the economic and efficiency of our services. We serve almost 17,000 electric customers and close to 65,000 gas customers. We also like to highlight that we are members of the American Public Power Association and the American Public Gas Association, and we've received some awards in recognition for the, the quality of service, the high levels of reliability, safety and efficiency. I want to point out also that we wouldn't be able to achieve this without the support and assistance from another, a number of departments. One is engineering, they don't just engineer and design our systems, but they help us procure equipment, they manage the contractors that do a lot of our work, and they also provide a lot of operational support. When we have challenges on our system, they come to our help and need and really help us out a lot. Human resources is also very valuable, environmental management and sustainability, Scott was able to mention a few of our cooperative efforts there. Fire department is one that we work very closely with. We work very closely with them to help us prepare for emergencies and plan for those, and then water resources is invaluable as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John, and he's going to talk about some performance metrics, or the budget, excuse me.
For 1920, we have no material changes to our department budget, other than payroll-related increases. We look to fund system expansions with contributions from customers or developers and bonds, and our remaining authorizations are fully committed for future and current projects. We also look to minimize costs and meet our maintenance and replacement and growth requirements with existing crews and contractors and temporary employees. And then finally, we work to recruit and retain qualified employee, qualified employees to meet labor requirements and minimize costs.
Couple of our programs that we'd like to highlight is one, the summer energy assistance program, so I won't go into a lot of detail in this to save some time, but it's a program that we started in 2015 to help our lower-income customers serve by our electric utility, to help them be able to withstand the increases in their consumption that causes the bill increases. So it saves our customers about $46 over the three months of their summer bills. We also started a small business assistance for the downtown electric service area a couple of years ago. We've saved customers, the three customers that were participating from November 2017 to February of this year, we've saved those customers about $6,000 on their electric bills. That's through a 25% reduction in their bill. They qualify for those reductions by having a certain number of employees and committing to stay in operations for a minimum of three years. And then we also have a economic development rate, which is designed for our larger customers, and so there are requirements to qualify for that discounted rate as well. They're generally tied to a minimum capital investment in their facilities and operations, as well as a minimum number of employees that's associated with the size of their electrical demand. We've also really been enhancing our efforts to train employees. One of the things we do in, in the way of leadership development is we sponsor one of our employees to participate in the Chambers Leadership Training and Development Program, so we've had each year for the past several years, we've given a scholarship, so to speak, to one of our employees to participate in that program. On the electric side, we've just recently developed a pre-apprentice training program, so some of our employees that are not on the electric side, who are interested in participating in the electric apprenticeship program, they're able to get some background training and education to get them prepared for an opportunity in our apprenticeship program. Our succession planning is very successful, we've got about 20% of our employees participating in that program, and many of those participants have been selected for promotional opportunities within our department as well as in other departments. We've also acquired quite a bit of technology to help us with our inspections and assessments of the condition of our equipment. A lot of those devices require some focal, focused training to make sure that we fully utilize that equipment and those technologies to their fullest extent, so. John's going to go ahead and step through a couple more slides on our performance metrics.
So this is a cumulative chart showing operating efficiency costs for the electric utility for direct operating and maintenance activities for electric. And for fiscal year 1819, we're currently 11% below target, and then last year, we came in at 18.4% below target. Some of the cost drivers that may make us go over the target are things such as the major storm we had last July, or increases in switching orders for substations and things like that. And then the same performance measure on the gas side, as far as 1819, we're currently tracking at 4% below the target, and last year we came in at 5.2% below the target. And influences on costs for this performance measure are increases in utility locating costs, increases in emergency response calls or third-party damages to our system.
The next four slides that we have provide some measure of the reliability and safety of our electric and gas system. The first slide there is what is our average response time to an emergency call-out on our electric system? The target for this metric is 30 minutes, meaning we don't want to have our customers waiting more than 30 minutes from the time our electric employee receives the call about the interruption in service until the, the time they arrive on site. We're showing this on a monthly basis, and you can see that we've typically gotten our average below the target. That doesn't mean that all of our calls are below that 30-minute response time, so when we see a call that gets above that 30-minute response time, we do a pretty thorough assessment to find out what was the nature of the delay, and typically, that's a result of when we have more than one call being called in at the same time in, in separate areas, so there's a separate call for multiple calls, or separate reason for multiple calls. Oftentimes, it, it's, it's something associated with a monsoon season, so we've used the data to identify when we need to allocate more human resources to our standby rotations. Next slide, another measure of reliability is using historical data, what is the expected duration that a customer can expect to see an interruption in service over a period of time? And we look at this data both on a monthly basis, but we've presented it here in a cumulative basis. So each month, we look at it when we exceed the target. For each month, we, we go into a fairly thorough assessment of what's causing us to exceed the target. We also look at it on a cumulative basis, and you can see from this graph that we just about met the target last year. Next slide is the emergency response for gas. Now we measure this a little bit differently on the gas side than we do on the electric side, so rather than using a straight average 30-minute response time as the target, we convert it to how many times did our responses exceed that 30-minute threshold? And so we have a target of no more than 9.8% of our emergency call-out responses on the gas side exceeding that 30 minutes. Anytime a call exceeds 30 minutes, again, we go through a very thorough assessment of what's contributing to that delay in our response. Typically, the cause of our gas interruptions in service is a third-party contractor who's not digging safely on or near a gas lines, and as a result of their unsafe excavation practices, they end up hitting our gas line and causing a catastrophic damage to it. So now the delays are caused typically by the distance between where our employee is located at when they get the call, and the distance to be able to control the event. It can also be traffic during certain periods of time, traffic, and the time of day associated with traffic is a cause for the delay. And then every once in a while, we have simultaneous calls, so we have multiple people typically on standby, but if in the same area of town, we have multiple calls simultaneously, that can cause the delay. On the, the gas side, rather than looking at the expected duration of outages, we look at the expected frequency of interruptions or outages, and you can see that we do this on a cumulative basis as well. We also look at it internally on a, on a month-to-month basis, and you can see we had a very early interruption in, in this fiscal year that caused us to exceed the target, actually, that was last year, excuse me, early on in the, in the fiscal year, and that caused us to exceed the target for the remainder of the year. Then our, our response, our frequency of our interruptions declined over the year, and we just about came out to the target by the end of the year. This year, doing, we're doing very well compared to the target.
On both gas and electric, is the majority, or what majority of our outages are third-party damage?
I'd have to defer to Bill Norton on the percentage of outages, but it's, there's very few outages that aren't associated with some kind of third-party dig-in. It's very seldom that we have a leak that requires us to shut down a large number of customers in order to repair that leak. We can usually organize that and, and structure it such that it minimizes the impact. On the electric side, a lot of it's weather-related interruptions, most of our system is still overhead. The most recent outages we've had, we've had Mylar balloons get into overhead powerlines, which is the cause of a lot of our, our larger-scale outages. Also, we have had some device failures that have caused recent outages, so we are looking at how we modify our inspection program so that maybe if we accelerate or, or increase the frequency that we inspect certain devices that have larger-scale impacts, we can minimize those outages. So it's a different story in electric than it is on gas.
Are we seeing any of the malicious activity, like I think it was Southwest Gas was experiencing a while back at their city gates and stuff like that, or we see anything like that in Mesa?
We have not experienced any evidence that someone is intentionally vandalizing or damaging our facilities. Most of our, our regulator stations are a little bit more secure, Southwest Gas has kind of an open area where they do it. We, we use a lot of vaults for our regulator stations.
Oh, we use vaults?
Yes, sir.
So Frank, off the line, you and I had spoke about the Mylar balloon problem in our, in our overhead electrical lines. Have, we were considered, or would it be feasible to create some form of an ordinance to make Mylar balloons, I guess, illegal to some extent, and what's the amount of damages that are being assessed by Mylar balloons, and does it make sense to create policy around eliminating them in certain areas?
Carrie and I have talked about this a lot, and when I brought this up, she called me a party pooper, and so I've, I've kind of decided that that's not, I've got other higher priorities to focus on, but there are some states that have proposed legislation that, that looks at that, and so.
Not a major enough problem in your opinion that you would consider any type of? of ordinance to try to fix it?
I think there might be ways. It's very time-of-year specific. We see a lot of risks of these types of outages during Valentine's Day and Easter, graduation time. That's kind of when we get the wave of these types of outages. So the frequency of it is not that great, but the potential consequences of it are pretty significant. So on a probabilistic risk basis, there's quite a bit of risk associated with it. We've produced a public service announcement that we've distributed on Mesa Channel 11. We've also worked with APS and SRP to try to promote those public service announcements to make people more aware of the potential impacts of letting go of a Mylar balloon when you're near powerlines.
So just a simple yes or no, like, would you have a desire to have an ordinance that eliminated Mylar balloons, or you don't believe that they're a big enough problem?
I'd have to do more research to see whether it's been done in other, I'm sorry, I can't give you a yes or no. I would want to go do some research on where I think it's been done in California, see if it's had any effect.
Fair, I appreciate it.
Okay, where are we at? Okay, so this slide is a very simple schematic of the smart grid. And so this is something that we have ambitions to achieve. I think it's very synergistic with the city's initiatives to pursue a smart city. I think there are a lot of mutual benefits and goals that can be achieved by moving towards a smart grid. The advanced metering infrastructure project will allow us to install the meters, which is really the key piece of equipment that our system is going to need in order to transition to the smart grid. Many of the principles or ambitions of a smart grid, it's usually referred to on the electric side, but those aspects also translate to the gas side as well. So for brevity and simplicity, as I'm talking about the smart grid, I'm going to refer to the electric side more than the gas side. Chris Hassert in Water did a good job of explaining the AMI project, so I'm not going to belabor those points. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So again, I'm not going to get into too much detail on the AMI meters to save some time. But what I would like to emphasize is that these types of meters, and there has been some controversy associated with them throughout the industry, but these types of meters provide us a way of connecting with our customers on a way that's not otherwise possible. We can gather the information from the meters within seconds of when the customer is using information. We can take the information from these meters and dramatically improve the effectiveness and efficiency of how we identify the geographical area impacted by an outage such as a Mylar balloon hitting our transmission lines, and how fast we're restoring services to different parts of the system. During a storm outage last year, we had what we thought was everybody back online because all of our lines were energized. And so what we found out is, even though we had energized many of the lines, multiple customers were still without power because something near them or on their side of the meter had tripped. And so with an AMI meter and gathering the data from those AMI meters, we could see whether or not that customer was indeed back in power, that they were actually consuming energy, or whether they were not consuming energy even though we were under the impression that the entire system had been re-energized and power restored. So that's just one of the examples of the high value that the meters are going to allow us to achieve.
Question on that. So on your AMI smart meters, obviously, we're talking about putting in smart gas readers, electric readers, and on the water side as well. A lot of that capital cost comes from the backhaul infrastructure to get the data from the meter or whatever you're reading back to the server, right? So I guess my question would be, as each department tries to build out these smart reader infrastructures, are they all able to leverage the same protocol or technology to communicate to the backend server so that you're not recreating that network transportation layer, right?
Yes.
So they're all be tied into that same infrastructure? Okay.
And not only, it's not just the gas and electric and water utilities that are trying to leverage all of the assets and infrastructure that the city owns, but it's also all the fiber that the ITD department owns. It's the assets that the transportation department owns. And it's not just transportation using their data for transportation purposes, but it could be us using transportation's information for electric purposes. If the streetlights aren't operating, then that could also be an indication that we've got an issue on the electric side because the streetlights aren't operating. So one of the things that the feasibility study did, and the smart city leadership team has done, is let's make sure, and with Chris's admonition, let's make sure that we definitely identify all the ways to capitalize and find the synergies between all the existing assets that we have. So if you look at, when we've looked at the potential cost of our AMI project, our communications cost, if that's a big umbrella of category of cost, is much lower than I ever expected to be because we have so much existing infrastructure that we're going to be able to take advantage This pie chart represents how we meet our electric energy supply requirements. We're the beneficiaries of some hydroelectric projects on the Colorado River that are operated by the federal government. Between them and our customer-owned solar program, where we incent customers to install and maintain their solar programs, we're meeting about 19% of our annual energy requirements with renewable resources. The red part of the pie obviously provides the largest percentage of our energy supply requirements. There's five separate contracts that make up that part of the pie. Those contracts are typically short-term contracts that will be expiring within the next three to five years. So as we come back to you in the near future with our Integrated Resource Plan, which spells out how we intend to meet our customers' forecasted energy requirements, we're going to be coming back with a plan that says, here's how we're going to try and meet those energy resources requirements, and the replacement of the existing contracts with renewable resources such as wind, solar. How do we use electric vehicles and the batteries that store energy to help us integrate those resources, those renewable resources that are sometimes intermittent and sometimes not necessarily producing power consistent with the timeframe when our customers consume power? How can we integrate all of those technologies and resources to keep our costs low and our So I talked a little bit about the IRPs, so we can dispense with that. I would mention that we are going through the final stages of a request for proposals for replacement of two of those contract components. We did not get any renewable resources responding to that RFP, but we will make sure that we, if we do pursue those contracts in this RFP phase, that we will make sure they're very short-term in nature so that the next time they come up for expiration, maybe there will be some renewable resources that can propose contracts to us. One of the things that we do have a bit of a time crunch on is the federal tax incentives are set to expire this year. So what we want to do is be issuing an RFP in the early part of the summer so that we can give those renewable resource projects an opportunity to take advantage of those tax incentives and help us meet our energy requirements with renewables. So that's a brief schedule of the current plan for how we would be replacing the existing contracts that are shown in that pie chart. Here's a little bit of information on our customer-owned solar program. So we're nearing almost 1 megawatt of customer-owned solar capacity. Our customer demographics make it a little bit of a challenge for our customers to invest in and own solar. But with our incentive program and the other efforts that we've put forward on the program, we've achieved quite a bit, I think. AMI meters will also help automate a process that we currently do manually to manage the data associated with the customers' production of solar energy, how it offsets their consumption, and then how we value that excess energy when it comes into our system. The next two slides indicate some of the unique aspects of the electric and gas enterprises. The red line on the lower part of the graph, for electric, that's what's called the electric energy cost adjustment factor. That's a rate component that allows us to recover the cost of our electric energy and transmission costs. We adjust that rate component as frequently as monthly, and you can see that over time, that cost factor has gone down. Why that's important is it's allowed us to introduce very small incremental increases in our rates that were offset by those decreases in costs. So that top line shows the trend of how our electric bills have actually declined over time, even though we've had these small incremental increases. So this has made our electric utility enterprise more sustainable, and the sources of revenue to fund things like the general fund more stable as well. So we do project very conservatively that we are going to see some increases in our electric energy cost adjustment factor, associated cost over time. But that's been our nature typically, is to be conservative about that so that we don't put too much of an increase in rates on our customers. The other thing to point out is, we have not adjusted our commercial customers or our non-residential customers' non-ECAF portion of the rates since 2005. And we only started increasing our residential customers' non-ECAF part of the rates. We didn't adjust them for many years. We started adjusting them again in 2015. So over time, all of our customers on the electric side's rates have gone down. On the gas side, it's a little bit different story. We have had those reductions in costs. That rate mechanism is called the purchased natural gas cost adjustment factor, or PNCF. That's represented in the red line there. And then the yellow line represents the increase in revenues associated with not only our rate increases, but also our customer growth and the increase in consumption. And so you can see that the trend there is also for our costs to have either been going down, our customers' costs and bills going down, or staying flat. I'm going to turn over to John to talk about our recent results.
So on the electric side, financially for 1819, revenue-wise, we're similar to 1718. Consumption's pretty much the same as 1718. We are seeing lower operating expenditures, and also that the debt service refunding that Water mentioned, we're recognizing the benefits of that, so that's helping improve our net income. One item to point out, as Frank just talked about, is the decreases in customer energies, or in the energy supply costs. You can see they are trending down, and that, as he said, results in bill savings to customers. On the gas side, as you know, we had a cold winter, so revenues are up this year, consumption's up about 17% through March. So we're seeing higher revenues this year as opposed to last year. Operating expenditures are trending along with budget. And then again, you see the supply costs being higher because of that increased consumption due to the colder weather this year. And then the net income's looking pretty healthy with those factors, also including the reduction in debt service costs.
And with that, we'd be happy to entertain any questions also the mayor might have.
Thank you very much, counsel. Any additional questions?
Frank, I brought up a while back about the master meters and what the Corporation Commission is going to start requiring with their rule that they passed, what, in November, December last year? Is that going to have an impact on Mesa? I know that a lot of the master pipeline, master meter folks do maintain their systems pretty well overall, but there are a few out there that are bad actors, and if they have leaks, you know, the odds that they'll pass the stand-up test are pretty slim. In those situations, have we started looking at how many of those master meters are in Mesa, and how many of them do we think would actually pass the stand-up test if something were to happen?
Councilmember Thompson and mayor, we've taken a couple of different angles on the master meter issue. We've met with quite a few of those master meter systems after they've called us. I can't remember the exact number, was it in the 80, they wrote of 80 systems? Yeah, so 113 systems through both Mesa and our service area in Magma. We've been working with the ACC staff, which, by the way, has had a recent changeover in their direction. So I think they're becoming a little bit more precautious in how far and how hard they move in that direction. We're certainly interested in helping those systems identify what their most immediate safety risks are, which typically is, as I mentioned earlier, the threat of third-party damages. But most of the master meter systems are behind some kind of a wall or other boundary, so they don't have a lot of inadvertent excavation happening on their systems and exposing them to that type of risk. So there's not a whole lot of risk associated with there that we are concerned with. They do have the tendency to have leaks, and to have those leaks go undetected and not classified, and the most severe leaks repaired very quickly. So we're trying to develop a proposal that would allow us to help those systems identify those leaks, classify them, and coordinate the repair of them most expediently so that they don't have to go through the process of trying to comply with an inspection program and protocol that's relevant and appropriate for a pretty sophisticated gas system like Mesa and Southwest Gas and Unisource, but it's not appropriate for a mobile home park or a church or something along those lines. So we think we can propose a solution to them that addresses the more immediate safety needs, that that 50-page inspection report that's appropriate for us isn't going to help the 100-space mobile home park.
That's good. I'm glad the Corporation Commission's kind of backed off their stance a little bit. So I think that'll help, and it'll also protect us, I think, from some extent because, you know, if we were going to have to go in and either convert them to all-electric or go all, you know, go in and install gas and meters, that was going to be a substantial hit to the city and to your budget. So I'm glad you're working with them, so thank you.
We've had a few instances where a master meter system has had a challenge, and we, of course, cooperate very closely with them and the ACC to diagnose what the situation is, use our system to help bring their system to a safe point where it can be repaired, replaced, and brought back up and energized safely.
Thank you.
Did we talk about where this pilot project is going on as far as the meters, AMI meters?
Oh, we're going to bring that, is that we're going to bring back in a couple of weeks? Okay, we'll bring it to you in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes, Jeremy. I apologize for going to step out. One question that I have, you know, on the water side, we talk about the lifespan of the pipes and the capital investment necessary to replace the pipes with their lifespan. My understanding is your operations is not extremely capital-intensive, but more so just, you're buying a commodity and selling it, right? Can you help me understand, do you have, do you have a schedule of, like, so the equivalent of what we saw in the water presentation, where you have the age of the pipes and the amount of capital necessary to replace all those pipes? Do you have that same type of thing in your department, or would you say that's irrelevant largely because you don't have large capital investments?
Well, the electric and gas systems are highly capital-intensive as well, but one of the parts that we've outsourced, if you will, on the capital-intensive part, is we don't own any gas wells, we haven't developed those, and we don't own any power plants. And so we've delegated that part of the capital-intensive nature of the energy industry to a contract with an additional party. In terms of our gas pipes, we have quite a few regulatory requirements to continuously monitor the state and condition of those systems. And most of our replacement projects are typically tied with, we're in a joint trench or in a very close common area with other infrastructure like water. And if water is going to go in and replace their infrastructure, then in order to make sure that there's not sure that there's not any negative impacts to our infrastructure as a result of their construction activities, we go ahead and accelerate what we would otherwise replace at a later date as well. So that's good, common business practices with the nature of if we had to subsequently go in and replace that pipe a year or two after the water line was placed, not only does it cost a lot more, but it creates that street cut which impairs the condition of the streets. So we might accelerate the replacement of one of our pieces of pipe to coincide with these other multiple departments. But generally, we have a, our steel system is cathodically protected, we have an ongoing leak survey process, high-risk areas are surveyed more frequently than low-risk areas. So we have a pretty good handle on what the condition of our system is and when the anticipated replacement dates are.
Yeah, so, I mean, to use the water as an equivalent, do you have that same sort of Excel sheet breakdown where it shows the amount of capital you need every year for, I mean, I think theirs was a 50-year cycle, so do you have that same chart that you show how much capital you require in order to continue functioning?
I don't think we've gone out 50 years.
How far?
The one thing I know about forecasting is, that you know for sure is your forecast is going to be wrong.
Sure.
And so we typically run out five to eight years with some detailed plans. And again, much of what our plan ends up being is driven by what Water or Transportation is doing with their projects. So it's kind of a fruitless exercise for me to forecast out much beyond five years when there's so much dynamics to the priorities that change for Water and Transportation. And that CIP is given to council, and council approves that CIP with the specific line items of those projects?
The five-year one. Yeah, so how do you, I guess, how do you wrap your mind around that you don't have any, like, large looming projects beyond five years? Like, so Water, for instance, you know, they show one year where it spiked up to, I might be wrong on this, like $60 million or something of pipe replacements. Of course, they'll replace them before then, but...
Right.
If you're only projecting out five years, how do you wrap your mind around if you're going to need any extremely large amounts of capital to keep functioning in year seven or 12 or 15?
Well, I think a large part of our system is either new or been recently replaced. So we know the vintage of all of the pieces of pipe that we have. And so if we knew that we were going to have a large vintage of pipe that was going to be ready to be replaced in a certain period of time, then we could forecast that. But we just don't see that type of catastrophic failures of our system. Most of the system can be monitored and interim repairs made until a major project comes along. So we can coordinate with the other departments as long as we see when they're going to have these major projects, then we can plan in advance with them. But we just, we don't anticipate that we're going to have a large wave of pipe failures that for the next, beyond the next five or 10 years.
Yeah, and to clarify, I don't necessarily mean pipes, per se. I just mean large capital expenditures, right?
So again, that's the difference. Water has major plants, water treatment plants, wastewater treatment plants.
Yeah, and that's, and that's my original question, right?
So that's the difference. So you're not going to see that in this side.
There aren't going to be huge fluctuations of...
Electric, you may have a substation, change transfers. We have a lot of mass property-type assets, a lot of poles per customer. We do have the four substations, and each of those substations currently has two transformers. We may have another substation here soon that's got a spare transformer. With the type of growth that we're seeing in downtown Mesa, if we don't find a way to reduce some of our demand, we may need to build another transformer and a substation. But those have lives of 40 to 50 years if they're operated appropriately and maintained appropriately. And so we've gone through a wave of replacing most of those substation transformers within the last five to 10 years.
Got it. Thank you.
Frank, I think what to maybe help Jeremy a little bit, too, is, you know, with the federal requirements on the natural gas industry, you have distribution, pipeline, integrity management that you have to go through. So they kind of build that spreadsheet based on the alkalinity of the soil to potential for third-party damage. So there's this, there's the whole list of things that go into decision-making on what pipeline should be replaced and when. And it's based on all types of factors from age to material to soil conditions and everything else. Pretty extensive.
The Distribution Integrity Management Program, DEMP as it's referred to, forces us or disciplines us to look at where our system is vulnerable to some kind of a safety risk. And so we get audited on each of those different programs each year, as was discussed earlier, about, well, how do we detect the corrosion of the system on the meters if we're not having meter readers out there on a monthly basis? So we comply with the regulatory requirements by absorbing what would otherwise be done by a meter reader, starting several years ago. We've spread that out to the other parts of our department that have a similar type of proximity to the meters and are capable of identifying the same types of issues or vulnerabilities that the meter readers would, but it's just done more efficiently. It's, you know, we have 1,200 service calls a year, so there's 1,200 homes that we're doing that inspection of the meter right there, just with one group of the personnel. Our leak survey team, they're surveying certain parts of our system every three years. The requirement for the inspection of corrosion is every four years. So we're doing, and we found a way to reallocate and reschedule staff, if you will, such that we're doing that above-ground corrosion inspection every two years. So we're meeting the requirements twice as frequently as were otherwise required.
One last follow-up question. You guys don't have like a reserve study that you guys do, like a reserve study, like a study of all your capital assets and their depreciated lifespan and when they need replaced? I don't know if that's something you do. I've seen that done in the past in different worlds, but I don't know if that relates to...
So you're talking about like a financial reserves?
Yeah, like, so, you know, like...
A capital replacement fund?
Yeah.
So...
Long-term.
So we have a couple of ways of which we manage that financially. We have the RER or Replacement Extension Reserve Funds. So that's 2% of our revenues each year is allocated towards some kind of a reinvestment, replacement of assets or equipment. So right now, we're using, on the electric side, we're using the RER money for meter replacements as well as critical vehicles that allow us to maintain and rebuild the system. We also use some retained earnings, if you will, some cash within the enterprise funds to do some of our equipment and infrastructure replaces, and then we also use bond financing as well.
Sure. Thanks, Frank.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. Next item on our agenda is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Counsel, what would you like to share with us? Mr. Freeman?
Mayor, yes. Several of us, Councilmember Thompson and Duff, we attended the autism certification training. I want to give a big shout-out to Mark Garcia. I mean, he hit out of the park, visited Mesa, and developed that program. Also, our Parks Department is stepping in, other departments. It was well-attended, and it's such a critical component to be the first autism-certified city globally, is the word he used. So that's a big deal. So thank you, Mr. Garcia and his staff, for doing that. I learned a lot, really, truly learned a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
I just wanted to recognize everyone at the airport, our public safety officials and everyone that participated in the drill yesterday at Gateway Airport. We had our mass casualty exercise. I was able to go out and watch both on the field side, then went back and watched the EOC portion, and it was like clockwork. So thanks for all the volunteers also that took time out of their schedule to go out there and lay down on the runway and act like they were victims of a bad accident. But the mutual aid was clear to see as we had Queen Creek and Gilbert and Mesa all responding to what could have been a potential incident, aircraft incident. So kudos to everyone. I'm eager to hear how that went.
Thank you. Mr. Luna?
I want to thank city staff for their ride-your-bike-to-work yesterday. It's a lot of fun, despite the fact that Mr. Brady's bike flattened. But we had a good time anyway, right? I'm sorry, you're tired. It was a lot of fun, and I thank Councilmember Duff for the extra bike, but it was a lot of fun.
Man, anything else, counsel, you'd like to talk about? All right.
Mayor Palmroy's funeral today.
Yes, in a few minutes, I know many of us will attend Wayne Palmroy's funeral. Just, I know we've, I'll just take another opportunity to say what a great man he was and what a loss that is for our community and for many people on an individual basis. So we're certainly grateful for Wayne Palmroy's contribution to our community. Mr. Brady, what is our schedule for future meetings?
Thank you, mayor. Just a reminder, we have our next study session will be Thursday, April 25th. We'll continue at 7:30 and continue with our budget discussions. And then also a reminder that the Vice Mayor Freeman and Councilmember Haretti are having a West Mesa Town Hall on Tuesday, April 23rd, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Westwood High School, if I'm correct. So that should be a good event for everyone to attend. Also, counsel, we want you to know we'll be sending out an announcement today. We had a very good results from our bond rating discussions, and so there will be some very good news. The city's already considered a high-grade investment, but we made some improvements. So soon as that is publicly published, we will share that with counsel today. So it's very good news about how Wall Street looks at the city of Mesa's finances. It's very good news for us. Thank you.
Great. We'll look forward to sharing that when it's appropriate. If there's nothing else, counsel, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.